Oh, cool. But he's gonna be the one to present? We're gonna call a February 3rd meeting of the West Sacramento City Council and Redevelopment Agency to order. We're gonna begin tonight, as we do each week, with the Pledge of Allegiance. We'd like to invite our guests to join the council and staff in the pledge. Our staff's already well ahead of us. And ask Mr. John Manila to lead us in the pledge this evening.
The Pledge of Allegiance is a reply of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The council did not meet in closed session this evening, so we're gonna proceed directly to our general administration agenda, item 1A, which is presentations by the public on matters not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the city council. As is noted on our printed agenda, the council is prohibited by state law from taking action or taking up items that are brought up under item 1A, but it does provide an important opportunity for a public forum. We do ask that anyone wishing to address the council on this or any other agenda item this evening to please fill out one of the yellow cards that's available at the door and turn it into the city clerk. In front of the clerk is a timer that we use to make sure that everyone has a chance to be heard, and to that end, we ask that all comments be limited to no more than three minutes. And we also recognize that for some folks speaking in public and on television before a vast audience paralleled only by the Grammys, it involves some anxiety, and so we do ask that there not be any boos, or cat calls, or applause, or other demonstrations, that we maintain a civil discourse here in the chambers. So with that, we do have a couple of requests to speak under item 1A, and the first is by Bill Lowell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor William Lowell of West Sacramento, for the record. And I know I don't have to tell you, but I'm a little disturbed about the bus service cutbacks, but I understand that's a reaction to the situation over at the state Capitol in large measure, if not mainly. And I'm just wondering if some of our businesses that usually stay open later are gonna be cutting back their hours by one hour or two. And it sounds like we're almost ready to shut down that little Bright Post Office on Lisbon, and so that's why if that happens, it makes it even that more important to have a bus stop for a number forty bus on the southeast corner of Jefferson, on Sacramento Boulevard there at Jefferson, so that we're across from the Broderick Post Office, so that folks riding the bus, well, they're not alienated so much. And so, and also that would help more folks shop locally. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lowell. John Bescharian?
Mr. Mayor, gentlemen. As Bill said, the postal service is considering closing our Bright branch of the postal system still. They have given us a survey dated January 25th that needs to be returned to the industrial Boulevard facility, to the district headquarters for Sacramento, by the 10th, a week from today. I have given each of you a copy of the letter that I received in my P.O. box. The survey mentions that they are considering closure of some of the major facilities. Those must be the ones that were on the website that everyone noted, since we weren't on it, we weren't being considered for closure. I beg to disagree. They have not changed their mind. My information has proven correct throughout. They are going to try and close it. The owner of the Brightway Market, who owns the property in question at 1548 Lisbon, was called this woman who told him, or she called him, rather, and told him that they were going to go month to month, starting in April. If you wanted the place to stay open, he better contact his congressman. I think this is a survey in name only, that there's a predetermined outcome that they wish to have. If the council would reconsider writing that letter that you talked about before, I would greatly appreciate it, as well as contacting our, lives on the coast, congressperson in D.C. that represents us, and perhaps our local state representatives as well. The more, the merrier. This is going down to the wire, and I appreciate and really respect, but request, our city's help in this matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bescharian. Mr. Kumar?
I got a check for $1,000 from my city, Sanatandaram Satseyarama and Manali of West Sacramento. It's for the Haitian Relief Fund and to donate to American Red Cross. Can you pass it on to them, please?
Absolutely. So I just wanna be clear. What you're doing tonight is you're delivering a check that would go to the American Red Cross Haitian Relief Fund.
Haitian Relief Fund.
It's a local resident of our community, a small business owner in our city, and I wanna just express on behalf of the council and the community, our appreciation, our pride in what you've done. It's an important example. I know there are a lot of citizens in West Sacramento and businesses that are participating in one way or another in their relief efforts, but it makes a big difference in Haiti to the people that are living and struggling there, and it's a very strong show of support from folks in our community. So thank you very much for doing it, for coming tonight to make the presentation directly, and we will directly transmit the check to the Red Cross.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Kumar. Hernan Frank?
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, good evening. I'm here with the following request. There's a dog leash law. That's my issue. I'm a resident here, and it's 6.16.020, dogs on leashes. It basically says all dogs must be on leashes. I live by the levee over there off of Bridge Island, and my dogs, Spots and Diamond, would love to run free out there. It's a beautiful area. I'm amazed at how gorgeous it is. I wanna tell you, gosh, guess what? Everyone's doing it anyway. So I have submitted a writing on this. In it, I cite my day job as attorney at law, so I like to talk that way, excuse me. Albert Einstein made a comment, "A law that nobody is obeying is not a good law." And I would like to legalize a pattern of conduct where people do take their dogs out there and run them, and that dogs just love it. In my letter, I give a lot of good reasons why. One reason is that my dogs will forever vote for you. I'll arrange that somehow. But anyway, I hope you'll look at this. I do have a writing on this, and check it out. I would also, on behalf of one of my law clients, Felix Liu, he's president of a Chinese Merchants Association, and I've handed a group of written invites to that. Invite you all to a Chinese New Year function. A vice minister from the Chinese Economic Development, Trade, and Science will be there, and there's gonna be some discussions there that I think would be great if some members of the city, including the mayor, if possible, or you all could be there. Mr. Felix Liu asked me to extend an invite to all of you. I've given that in a writing, and he would treat you all to VIP status. I don't know if that means a red carpet, but it means something good. So anyway, that's what I have, and I hope you'll look at my writing and do something to look into this leash law situation. Thank you.
Thank you. The deputy police chief is working on a camera proposal already for the levees to check folks without leashes on their dogs. Michael Oktev?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm here to underscore J.B.'s request for you to write a letter to the postal service. I live on 731 Solano Street, have used that little post office for over fifty years, and I personally, on the first round when we had a request for you to write a letter, collected fifty signatures from people right around the neighborhood that use it, regularly use the post office. So again, when the closure raised up its ugly head, we're here to ask you to help us fight the closure. Write the letter. It'd be appreciative very much. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Oktev. All right, those are only requests to speak under item 1A. Mr. Kristof's our resident expert, as a former postmaster, resident expert on the post office issue, so it might be appropriate to ask Mr. Kristof and the city manager to infer if we need to, if it's appropriate for us to transmit a letter, then we could do so.
I think it'd be totally appropriate. I mean, there's such a convenience factor, and it's very, very historical, and I worked at that post office for, I don't know how many years, fifteen, twenty, or something like that, and it's very near and dear to my heart, and I'd like to work with the city manager, see if we can put something together, some kind of letter, or whatever it is, together so that we can do that.
Right. And if the time allows, I don't know the timeframe of the decision, but if the time allows for it to come back here for a council resolution or something at a higher order, that seems appropriate. If not, I'm certainly happy to execute a letter.
Yeah.
But if we have the time, I think it would be stronger if it was accompanied by a proclamation from the council.
I think so, too. And I think we'll have time, but one of the other things that I do think would be appropriate, we need to draft a letter to alert Congressman Thompson. He would be our congressperson, and he's the one we really should go through, and I think that that would have some benefit.
Mr. Johansson?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And also, perhaps we could look at the transportation issue, too, in the event that the facility does close. Transit is a big issue in that area of town, particularly with older folks, and to see what kind of Plan B we have, if it is closed down, to allow people to go to another facility.
All right, then with that, we'll proceed to item 1B, which is council communications. Their report, Mr. Kristof has a special item, but are there reports from any members of the council at this stage? Mayor Portembiagis?
Yeah, just two quick ones. I wanted to make sure the council was aware. So I think I've been posting the council on the status of some of the activity with the Sacramento Regional County Sanitation District and its efforts to combat some of the media that's presented what's been happening with the Sacramento River and the discharge from the facility in Elk Grove and its contribution to pollutions downriver. That whole issue has elevated to a new level in the last week, and I think I forwarded some of the correspondence to the city manager's office, but the Fresno City Council last week, and it's still unclear whether or not their notice was legal or not, they took up a resolution essentially condemning the district, which we belong to, for contributing to what they see as pollutants into the river and making things worse downstream and in the Delta. And so the resolution goes on to say a lot of things. I think they heard our arguments. We actually had somehow managed to get a letter to them on behalf of the district explaining elements of the science that have come out, indicating that we aren't doing what we're being accused of doing, but there's debate in both directions on that. So essentially, what's happened is now the whole issue has been elevated a little bit further than what I thought we would see this early on, but I wanted to just make sure that the council was aware that it's now moving quicker than I think many of us thought. Just wanna post you on that, even though we did not meet, that happened late last week. And then I just wanted to report, the city school two-by-two met on the February 1st, and we received some updates on a couple different things. The district, I think the council may recall, the district went out to bid with their solar project. I think it's about an eight million dollar solar project for the new high school. They're very excited about the prospects of that. They received some very good bids, so they're going through that process right now. We had a good conversation with the district on the maintenance of the field, the new high school and the stadium. I think there's been a lot of inquiries from the public about utilizing that, although it wasn't part of the original M.O.U. that we have with the district, with the rec center. The school manages that, but the public assumes that it's publicly accessible. It hasn't been as accessible as the public would like, and so I think the parks director, Mr. Johnson, and the district are having ongoing conversations about how to manage the expectations for that field and the track, because the public wants access to the track and the maintenance of it and all that, so that's going well. We received an update from the trustees on the status of the new superintendent, as you know, the district is without a superintendent effective, I think this week, right? I think Steve left at the end of January. So they're moving, and I believe they've moved in the last week to place an interim in place until April, which is when they expect to have a new superintendent. And they've done some things, I think, within the district to signal to any prospective applicants for the superintendent's position that they actually are very happy with the direction that the district is going. They've done some changes organizationally to signal to anybody coming in that they don't, they're not looking for a wholesale cleaning house, as oftentimes is the case when districts are looking for superintendents. They wanted to make it clear that they like the folks that they have, they think they got a good team in place, and they're looking for somebody to continue down the path that they're headed. They're very proud of the success recently. And along those lines, one of the items that was brought up, and I thought it was received well, and staff are gonna explore it, and that is, we've come to a point now where, in the city, as a partner with the school, we're now offering a continuum of education that was never before been available here in West Sacramento, starting from the collaborative effort for the universal preschool system, to the conversion of the K-8 system with the new high school and with the Sac City District College Center across the street. We now have a continuum of education that's new to West Sacramento, so we're exploring ways with which to continue to celebrate that and to advertise that to folks either already here or coming to West Sacramento, to make sure that people know what it is we have to offer, which we're very excited about. So, and then we received an update on the status of the universal preschool system itself. We had some very exciting news received from California's First Five Commission. They are moving, we believe, hopefully, assuming the money is still available come the end of the budget negotiations, that the legacy programs, which we are one of, there are only about a dozen statewide, would potentially receive an extension of funding for the program, which would otherwise be coming to an end pretty quickly if we don't find other funding sources. So we're excited about the prospects of continued funding for that program, and I believe that was it.
Are you designated to give the port commission a report? Or is there nothing to report, because we continued the one item?
I would say there's probably nothing to report, because we continued the one main item.
Mr. Johansson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The West Sacramento Housing Development Corporation had a board meeting on January 23rd. The meeting was essentially routine matters, but we also held first of what may be many strategy sessions, half-day strategy sessions, at one of the newer breakfast spots in West Sacramento, the Pheasant Club. And we were accompanied by Tina Guntarsky, who's representative on the board, as well as her extended city family, to talk about the partnership, what does the partnership look like between, or what can it look like, between the Housing Development Corporation and the city, and the private sector, and really kind of a brainstorming of issues of how that organization is going to fit into the implementation of some of the housing policies, where its strengths are, where the city's strengths are, and kind of looking for opportunities for partnerships. It was a good opportunity for the board to talk directly with the city staff, who are directly involved with some of these projects. No goals were identified at that point, but we're going to be talking about that, I imagine, at the next board meeting, and start formulating the next year's strategy.
A couple as well. The Delta Protection Commission met here in our city hall at the end of last week. It's the last meeting of the commission before its complete reform and revision as a result of the state water legislation. And the council recall, I haven't updated you in a while, because other things have been happening, but the commission began a rewrite of the Delta land use plan about two years ago. And although the attention was all taken away by the state water package, we've been having these major battles in the Delta around how much control, what would be allowed, and sort of the whole issue around the sugar mill in Clarksburg, and whether those sorts of projects would ever be permitted. Some pretty big fights, actually, between local governments, reclamation district representatives, and the various state agency folks. We were asked to vote on the final new land use plan last Thursday and convert it into regulations. We could not get to a majority vote as a result of that. We will next month, because the state agency folks are almost all stripped off the commission as a result of the legislative reforms. So the commission is gonna be predominantly city and county representatives next month, so we expect that there will be a close to unanimous vote at that time. There'll still be state representatives, but there'll be agency secretaries, not line managers, which we expect will provide them more flexibility to cast votes that actually make some common sense, and also are able to look at the votes on the overall plan as opposed to, I don't like this one specific piece, therefore I have to vote no, because I represent the Parks Department, and this part's not great for Parks. Those of us in the local government have to balance those sorts of issues all the time, and so although none of us agreed with the whole thing, it's much less of a problem than it was a year ago, when I think I reported that, you know, the standards that they were adopting completely ignored the new state floodplain laws and would have banned development virtually everywhere in the entire Delta, which would have caused towns like Clarksburg to essentially disappear over time. So it's a good outcome, but it will happen next month. Again, here, we're hosting it again later this month as a result, and the new commission will take responsibility for it. The SAICOG board met at the end of last month, and although I wasn't present, the board did give final approval to the allocation, the regional allocations of all of the transportation funds that I've reported on, because we did so well. I've reported on it every single meeting for the last six months. So they did approve the funding for Tower Bridge Gateway 2, and also the funding for the Clarksburg Line Branch Trail in Southport. So those were big wins, and again, just a very strong endorsement of what we're doing in the city, good staff work, good projects, and also as a result of actually us delivering projects on time and on budget up to this point, we're a popular grant funding recipient at the regional level, and I think that's gonna continue. So that's got final approval in the city of Sacramento, while they weren't happy with the ultimate outcome. I think it's learned the appropriate lesson, which is they're figuring out how to write better applications next time and come up and nominate projects that actually are more competitive, given the criteria that are out there. So next year, we'll have to up our game even more, but I think we are definitely on a strong foundation. And then lastly, the streetcar policy steering committee meeting was canceled, because there were Maria Pasco from Mark Shop and others are busy putting the application together. But I did wanna know, just because there's been some question about this before, that Mayor Johnson, you know, agreed enthusiastically, actually, to include a letter with the application. There isn't time, our application for the federal urban circulator grant program is due too soon for this to go through their city council and get approval. And so Mayor Johnson agreed to execute a letter in support of the project, essentially committing the city of Sacramento to its success and to being a partner in both financial and otherwise and so forth. There was really no question. He said, you know, absolutely, this is a project that's important to us. That was very positive. And he hosted, the regional director for the Federal Transit Administration, Leslie Rogers, last week. He brought him out here, and at our request, also made a significant pitch on the streetcar project as part of the urban circulator grant program. So both positive developments for the partnership on both sides of the river. So with that, Mr. Kristof has a special presentation under item 1B.
Yeah, this pertains to flood protection in the city of West Sacramento, and I'm part of the JPA, between the city of West Sacramento, RD 900, RD 537. And we have some very, very good news for the community tonight. And as everybody knows, the city has upfronted and undertaken a number of endeavors to increase our flood protection. Ever since Katrina, we've had new standards that we have had to adhere to, and we've broken the city down into various reaches, and we take those reaches and we go out and we do what the engineers, the corps, the state, and our city engineers, what they recommend that we do in order to fix flood protection. And we have one of the reaches done, and the city upfronted certain amounts of monies to get it done, so we could do it in a real quick manner. Instead of waiting for all the monies to come in, the city has upfronted some funds, and we will take those funds, and when we get reimbursed, then we'll take those funds, we'll go to the next reach, and we'll move throughout the entire system, and we will get this community up to the level of flood protection that the corps, DWR, State of California, and us, what we want. And so with that, we had partnerships, and one of those partnerships is with the State of California. And there are certain formulas for reimbursement, and one of the things that I'm really proud to announce tonight is with the, we have Kent here, and he's with the State Department of Water Resources, Project Delivery Branch Chief, and I'd like to bring him up and say just a couple words, and then I'd like to bring the council down for a presentation. I've got a big check, and so those are always good things, and so with that, I'd like to bring Kent on.
Mr. Mayor, council members, partners, citizens, good evening. I'm Kent Sinobia, I'm civil and environmental engineer with the California Department of Water Resources in the Division of Flood Management, and I'm the chief of the Project Delivery Branch, and delivering some good news tonight. And we wanted to thank you for stepping up and moving forward with your flood project work. You're one of the cities that has the foresight to do that and has the citizens and the public behind you, and the state recognizes that. Tonight, we have, we'd like to present you with a check and moving forward with that in something called the Early Implementation Program, to start upgrading the levees that protect this wonderful city. You wanna bring them down now?
Bring the council down? The council down, and I'd like to bring the staff up, too. Bill Panos and his staff, with Mike Bichette, and anybody else that's there, I'd like to bring them over, too, and just take a picture. This is really sort of a special day, and this just really sort of opens up, I don't wanna say the floodgates, but it opens up, it opens up the process. Because it's taken a while to get the first check to come in for reimbursement, but now that we're through this process, it's just gonna be easier and easier and easier to, we hope, to have those funds reimbursed, so that we can take it to the next reach, and we can expeditiously get through the 27 miles of levees that we need to do.
Sir, now, see if my wife was here, I'd know who to give the money to, but I have a suit.
Go to the mayor. He's gonna sign the check.
Mr. Mayor?
We're gonna spend it.
Yeah.
This check is $1.5 million. This check is $1.5 million.
I'm going to, I'm going to pause you in just a second. Flash there? No flash. Oh, I got one here. One more after that.
So a lot of folks were acknowledged.
That was a good thing.
But I, I do think it's important to thank the voters, both of the state of California, who in 2006 approved $5 billion in funding that this check comes from, and our own local voters and property owners who twice have approved sales tax and property assessments that allowed us to do exactly as Mr. Kristoff said and, and not wait for the state funding to arrive, but to actually begin work on the projects, start fixing the levees in anticipation of the state dollars arriving. And so we are, we are much farther along than virtually any other community in California as a result. And, and it would not be possible if the voters of this community and the state didn't have the foresight necessary to, to improve our flood protection. Yeah, Mr. Berset's on his way to our bank right now, to the drop box. All right. Thank you, Mr. Kristoff.
Thank you.
All right. So item 1C's appointments, we don't have any this evening. Consent agenda is item two and three. Any questions or items to remove on consent? Moved by Mr. Beers, seconded by Mayor Viegas. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, turning down, that motion carries unanimously. That brings us to item four, which is a public hearing in consideration of Resolution 10-4, establishing community facilities district number 27 in consideration of Resolution 10-10, determining the necessity to incur bonded indebtedness and calling an election for the purpose of submitting the levy of the special tax, the incurrence of bonded indebtedness, and the establishment of an appropriations limit to the qualified electors of the district assessment.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council. The item before you is the next step in the process to form CFD 27 in the Bridge District. The recommended action tonight is for the council to have a public hearing and then to consider Resolutions 10-4 and Resolution 10-10. Staff is before the council on December the 16th of 2009, presenting the tax formula. And the council approved the resolution of intention at that time. There really are no substantial changes to the tax formula, so I do not have a detailed presentation. But for members of the public and for purpose of the public hearing, I did just want to briefly review the elements of CFD 27. This is a proposed community facilities district that would be formed consistent with the Melrose Act. It really has three elements to it. One is a tax on undeveloped property that would be levied in order to support bonds that are necessary as part of our Prop 1C grant program. The second element is an annual tax on developed property that would be required once, once development occurs within the Bridge District. And the third is a one-time special tax program that is really essentially similar to an impact fee program in that development would pay that tax when they come in for their project approvals. Again, the Bridge District is the area generally near Wrayley Field along the waterfront. Additionally, in your staff report packet, you have what's called the hearing report. This is a legally required document as part of the formation process. And in addition to the legal requirements, it provides the sort of background and the overall goals and objectives of the financing plan associated with the Bridge District. It has one scenario identifying the cash flow of how tax increment and CFD revenue would be used in the Bridge District. This document was actually presented to you in March of 2009, and there really are no substantial changes to the document since that time. Just want to highlight, there was one change in the packet relative to what you received last week. I did prepare a memorandum. Attachment five to Exhibit A of Resolution 10-4 was modified. This is the exhibit that identifies the various zones for purposes of the repayment tax for the state. And we needed to allow a footnote to be placed on that exhibit in the event that land ownership changes between now and the time of the vote to, to allow us to catch those changes. So as part of your, your recommended action, I would ask that you include that amended exhibit as well. That concludes my formal presentation, and I'm available for questions.
Are there questions for staff this time? All right, then we're going to open the public hearing on item four. We don't have any requests to speak, but this is a public hearing. So does anyone wish to address the council on this item? Seconded down, we're going to close the public hearing on item four. Return to the council for any further questions or discussion or for a motion. Mr. Johansson.
Shannon, just quickly, on the, the estimated, the cash flow schedule on Table nine, it looks like we've got some allocation here for parking. I imagine those are structures. And it looks like most of the investment is coming in, starting in 2022 to, it looks like 2030. Are there any transit assumptions that go into the need for those garages? Or, I mean, what, what are the transit, the level of transit?
The, the transit assumptions are associated with the overall Bridge District specific plans and providing a certain level of service in terms of transit. It's also a function of the parking study that was done. And then the identification of when the garages come into place in this cash flow is really a function of when the revenue is available to build those structures.
Okay, so these could be less?
I suppose it's possible, but they were based on the expected standards that was done as part of the specific planning effort.
Okay, thanks.
Further discussion? Mr. Beers?
Mr. Mayor, I would move that we approve Resolution 10-4 establishing CFD 27, approve Resolution 10-10 determining the necessity to incur bonded indebtedness and calling for an election. Direct staff to continue with the CFD 27 formation and to accept the revised attachment five to Exhibit A to Resolution 10-4.
It's been moved and seconded. Seeing further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, turning down, that motion carries unanimously. Item five is a public hearing to consider Resolution 10-2, authorizing submission of a community development block grant economic development over the counter funding application for provision of a business loan to the owners of Riverview Montessori LLC. Ms. Collis?
Good evening. The city of West Sacramento, as you know, operates a business loan program that provides assistance to new businesses and to existing businesses that are expanding and creating new jobs. Funding comes from the State of California Community Development Block Grant Program, known as CDBG. And the state in turn receives this funding from the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development. Under CDBG regulations, businesses must create at least one job for every $35,000 loan. And at least 51% or more of those new jobs created must go to persons who are from low-income households. For example, in Yolo County, the HUD annual income limit for a four-person household would be a household that makes no more than $58,100 per year. The city has three ways that we can obtain CDBG funds for business loans. We can apply for a state enterprise fund grant, and that provides us with just a pot of money. And we did this last fall. The city was recently awarded $300,000, but we're waiting on receipt of the grant agreement before we can make loans from those funding, that funding source. We also operate a revolving loan fund that is capitalized with payments received from loans made in previous years. And we made two loans last fall, and there are no funds remaining at this time in the revolving loan fund. The grant application under consideration this evening is for the remaining, the third type of funding. And that is an over-the-counter grant, which may be submitted to the state for a particular project. These are usually larger loans. We received an over-the-counter grant of $950,000 last year for the expansion of United Bakery. And the application before you this evening is the first under consideration this year. We're limited to $2 million in over-the-counter grants per year. The proposed application requests funding to provide a $315,000 loan to the developers of a Montessori preschool and childcare center to be located at 331 East Street. And this is in the Washington neighborhood. The facility is located near both Calsters and the State Department of General Services and would serve 55 children. Total project costs are estimated to be $1.1 million. The facility will create 10 full-time equivalent jobs, which exceeds the nine jobs required for this size of a loan. The city's Business Loan Advisory Committee reviewed the loan application earlier today and recommended that the council approve the loan. Committee members did ask staff, however, to inform the council that this loan is less secure than others that they have approved recently. However, they feel the assistance is warranted based on the city's commitment to supporting preschool and due to the need for more childcare facilities serving our larger employers located on the north side of town. If the business is not successful and does not create nine jobs within the first two years of operation, the city's risk would be that we would be required to repay these funds to the state CDBG program. The loan committee has recommended a number of conditions to be placed on the loan to secure the city's investment and to try and reduce the risk of business failure. We have recommended a loan amount of $315,000, but the resolution for this application would allow the city to apply for enough funding for a loan of up to $350,000, primarily to give the state some leeway if they, if their underwriting shows that additional capitalization is needed for this project. The business owners have hired Leonard Development Company to manage the land acquisition and construction process. And the business owners, the Olivers, and John Leonard of Leonard Development are available to answer any questions the council may have for this project. And I'm available also for any questions.
Are there questions for staff at this time?
I have.
Mr. Kristoff.
Louise, why is the city obligated to, in essence, sort of underwrite the loan? Would we have to pay it back if it fails?
Because this is a loan that requires job creation. So the, and we usually count the jobs usually like at the end of the first year. And, and then if they're not, if they haven't created the sufficient number of jobs, we would go out again probably six months later and six months after that. But usually we have about two years for this size of loan to create the jobs. And if jobs are not created, then it is not a CDBG eligible project.
Right. So what is special about their business plan that, that your staff and the people that looked at the business plan will make it successful?
Some of the risk mitigation that we are looking at, for, for one thing, we, we feel that the, normally we require at least a 95% loan to value. And this one's going to be a little higher, probably closer to 98% loan to value. And in this current market, it's even difficult to tell what the actual value of a, of a parcel in that neighborhood is going to be. There's just not really good comps. So what we have done, so for example, if the business were to fail, the only way the city would be able to pay that loan back to the state basically would be to foreclose upon the property. And there will be a bank loan in front of us. So, you know, our, the amount of money that we could get would be, would be limited. So we've asked the business to talk to Calsters and talk to the Department of General Services and, and get something in writing from them, hopefully, ensuring that they do not have any plans within the next three to five years to develop childcare centers on their sides because that would significantly hurt the business's ability to succeed, especially in the initial, few initial, first few initial years, which is our job creation. That, that's a critical time for job creation, is those first few years. We have, we will be taking, doing, doing a UCC filing on all business assets. We may take, if, if it's allowed, on the, the owners have a first and a second mortgage on their home. If it's allowed by their lenders, which is not always possible at this time, we would take a third position on the owner's home. We also have, are going to restrict the owner from redrawing funds from the business at the city's discretion. So they will have to come to us, show us their current financials so that we can ensure that there's sufficient cash flow, sufficient money to keep this business afloat before they draw any cash out of it. And we also will be requiring that they receive quarterly financial counseling, either from a CPA or other type of financial advisor that the city, approved by the city, possibly the Small Business Development Center. And they would have to review their finances with the council quarterly and then bring them to us for our review quarterly.
So what funds are at risk for the city? General fund, agency funds, grant funds? If it were to default, what pot of money would you take to pay back the state?
I don't know that I can answer that right now. I believe we could do it from program income, but I am not sure. I would have to check on that, from our CDBG program income. Now, for example, if they create eight jobs and the requirement is nine, we owe $35,000 back.
Right. I understand. Yeah, right. I understand that. Okay. My major concern is if Calsters or General Services, if they were to put a daycare there for their employees within the next five years. That, that is something that I would be concerned with then is because I'm not so sure. I mean, I realize that this family is very successful at the Montessori school that they have in Southport, and they have a waiting list and all the other things. But I don't know about opening a new school and making sure that it is going to be financially successful. Because I mean, I see, you know, throughout the region, I see where daycares, they belly up. You know, they, they don't quite make it for whatever reason. And so I'd just like to make sure.
And of course, our loan is also conditioned upon their ability to obtain a bank loan that'll be an SBA loan. So, you know, there, there, there is some bit of comfort if they are bankable. It, it makes their loan package in our eyes a little bit stronger, that a bank, that a bank also feels they're worthy.
Thank you.
Mr. Johansson.
Louise, the, because the city's going to be at risk on this, you'd mentioned there's going to be some control on draws. Does that include salaries and bonuses and that type of thing?
Now, employee salaries, we will not restrict. They, they have to pay their salaries. But draws by the owners will, will only be allowed after we've had our review of their financial.
But the owners are allowed a salary too, aren't they?
The owners are Rebecca and Lawrence Oliver. Their daughter will be one of the employees, so she will be an employee, she'll draw her salary. But the owners will not be able to draw anything above that salary unless it's approved. Excuse me, not above the salary, anything at all unless it's approved first by the city. And what we'll look at is their, their cash flow state, their profit-loss statement and see, you know, how the business is doing and, and what it can, what kind of draws it can absorb.
Okay, and have they, I mean, they obviously have looked at the market, they've been in the business here before, but I know the Rivers neighborhood could certainly use this type of facility in addition to Sturs. But do they have any idea of the number of potential kids that would come from Sturs?
They, they provided us, I didn't bring it with me this evening, they provided us with a copy of the minutes from the Universal Preschool Commission from last year where there was a discussion with Sturs and Calsters stated that they, their survey of their employees indicated that they could completely fill the facility. Now, that was a year ago, so some of those, you would expect some of those people to have found childcare at this time, but it's, it's still a fairly strong indicator of the need in that side of town.
Okay, great, thanks.
Louise, just location wise, there's, is this an empty lot currently on East Street?
It is. It's on E and Fourth.
Gotcha, okay.
It's actually right across the street from Patio's de Castillo that we had the opening on last fall.
Okay. Are there questions at this time? All right, then we'll open the public hearing then on item five. Again, we have no request to speak on the item, but it's a public hearing, so does anyone wish to request the counsel on this item? Seeing none, then we'll close the public hearing and return to the council for further questions or discussion.
Just a comment.
I know the applicants, I know the applicants have been working every possible angle to find a way to expand upon their successful program that they've got, they've had in the community for a couple of years now. I know they've, they've been trying to figure out which partners would help make this happen. I know they've been working around the clock to figure out a way. And there's no question that there's a demand. If we can provide the supply, they're, they're, if we build it, they will come is I guess how it's been going so far. So I, I do know that there was some discussion, I don't know whether it, well, it ever reached the formal discussion level. And maybe it would be helpful if I could get some information about how this would play into our, our attempt to try and sort of level the playing field for preschool slots for the entire community. I mean, it's, I mean, I know the state had a, had a goal of when they built new buildings to put, you know, childcare and preschool components right, right in the buildings. That never materialized in several instances. And so consequently, they, when they bring buildings in, the, the burden is then placed upon the employees to figure out what to do. And I don't know, Carol, I know we had some preliminary conversations, maybe it might have just been you and I, but has that materialized in any real way or is that just kind of an open?
Well, I don't know if you're referring to the action that the executive board took of the Up for West SAC program. We approved a $30,000 facilities funding for them conditional upon approval of this loan and, and other financing. And in, in order to pay that back, they were going to return, their payback was going to be in kind by offering free preschool to an appropriate number of children to pay that back. I don't know if that's what you're referring to or remembering.
And that's consistent with what we've been trying to do.
That's correct, that's correct.
The universal system that we were trying to, to keep afloat. Okay. Okay, I just want to make sure that, I mean, I think we're, as Bill said, I mean, we're putting, there's some degree of risk here and I just want to make sure that in return we're, we're getting a player that's, that's helpful, helping us achieve our goal, which is to provide that universal component to everybody. So it sounds like we're achieving that, okay?
So Carol, just on that, on that piece, the preschool, so it's a, one time, the staff report indicates 20,000, so maybe we could be locked the right number down, whether it's 20 or 30,000. But so that we would, we would be using impact, the childcare impact fee revenues, that pot of funds to provide an equipment, to pay for playground equipment and some other materials and fixtures in the classrooms and in, on a one-time basis, obviously. And then for like a year or is there, is there some time schedule over which there would be this preschool provided through the Universal Preschool for West Sacramento program?
We haven't actually worked out the details. I wanted, it, it is $20,000. I'm sorry, I'm saying, it's not 30, I'm saying corrected.
I, I, I asked the, Justine, what's her last name?
Jimenez.
Jimenez.
Jimenez, thank you. The, the director of the Universal Preschool Program. And she said that the free preschool will be paid, will be provided during the, the coming school year. So it'll be the 2010, 2011 school year. So it'll be repaid within that one fiscal year. And it's $20,000 worth of pre, free childcare probably will be at the Southport facility. That's what they're proposing at this time because they already have the Universal Preschool Program at that facility. But.
I think that the number of spaces is dependent upon the reimbursement rate that the board is going to approve on the upcoming year. And that was predicated on what funding we had available. So it will depend on how many, what that reimbursement rate is per space to determine how, how many spaces you would get.
I think it should be noted that Calsters did pay $140,000 in childcare impact fees. So in a sense, the, the city is getting quite a bit for its money here because we still have another $120,000 in child, childcare impact fees to support the, the childcare needs of, of the employees in that facility.
Well, the Universal Preschool Program is obviously separately governed from us, but the impact fees are a city, are city activity. I just would agree, as a financial matter, paying for capital, making a capital expense to deliver a bunch of services all in a single year doesn't seem like the best approach. I mean, we know we have a, we're, we will, we keep somehow producing more four-year-olds every year. And so to spend all $20,000 in one year and then have zero money to provide those, the same subsidies the following year doesn't necessarily, to me, doesn't sound like the best financial planning for the, for the, for the Universal Preschool Program. So it's, it's not our choice, but I would certainly encourage them to think about a different approach that schedules it out over a longer period of time. And the second is this whole question about where. Because there, we definitely do not, we don't have, we don't have adequate preschool and daycare facilities and programs throughout the city. But for the subsidized program in particular, you know, it is, it is critical that we have adequate numbers in the northern part of the city, which would be exactly where this new, where this new site would be. So I, I understand the, the administrative ease of transferring all those slots to the Southport facility, but I'm, I personally am not convinced that that's the, the most appropriate public policy outcome to not have the subsidized seats, subsidized slots available for kids from families that are more, that either live or work closer to the, to this facility in the Washington neighborhood. On the, the dollar side, so I mean, this whole question about whether we can repay, if there was a default on the loan, if we could, if we could repay the CDBG program through program income is, is kind of important.
Really?
All right, so is there a way for us to find that out before we grant final approval? Or can we, if we were to adopt this this evening, could we do so with a, with a condition that, that, you know, will only be executed by, I'm not sure, by me or by the city manager if it's, if we determine that, that that's possible? Because we, we cannot expose any of our other discretionary funds to a, to a 300 or 350,000 dollar obligation. We just don't, we can't do that in today's fiscal climate. So that's, that, to me, that's, that's an important question that we would need to get an answer to. So if that means continuing it or if it means, or if we could, and, and, you know, attach a condition to that, we won't execute it until you're able to answer that question, which I assume would be tomorrow, that would make, for me at least, that would make me a lot more comfortable.
Yeah, we could, we should be able to get an answer tomorrow on that.
Yes.
One other question? Oh, I'm sorry.
So we could, if we, if we were to adopt this evening, this evening, we could condition it in that way, okay?
Yeah, I would certainly like to condition it. Louise, what, Louise, wait a minute. One of the other things that would be important for me too is include that letter from Calsters or General Services that they are not going to build a daycare facility on their properties within the next five years. Do we have the answer to that?
The, the business owner has been asked to request that. So we, that, that was something that came up, that was proposed by the loan committee today. So they haven't had a chance, but I know that Ernesto Lucero in our Economic Development Division has already put, placed a call to talk to their facilities manager and on our behalf, but we are asking that the business secure that before we, as a condition of the loan approval.
Okay, thank you.
We've talked a lot about Sturs, has DGS, which is a not trivial employer in the neighborhood, have they been contacted at all to, about their employees' interests or the market that's potentially there?
I can't answer that, but the business owners are here if you'd like more information on their business plan and, and who they've talked to.
Okay. I mean, I, I don't, I don't, I mean, that's why we have the, the business loan committee to go through all the details, but just, I mean, as has been said, the Rivers is definitely a opportune area for full-fee paying customers. But, but we often forget about DGS because they didn't pay into the impact fee and they're not new, but there's a lot of employees there with, with young children, so. Okay. Further discussion? All right, then is there motion?
Yeah, I would move that we approve resolution, the right one here, yeah. Resolution 10 dash four establishing, oh, wait a minute, I'm sorry.
10-2.
Jumped ahead here. My goodness, jumped ahead. All right. Resolution 10 dash two, authorizing submission of a CDBG economic development over the counter application for an amount not to exceed $411,208 and approve a CDBG funded business loan not to exceed $350,000 to the owners of the River View Montessori if the grant is awarded.
All right. And can we include the, the condition that this will only be executed?
Protecting.
You know, once the, once, once it's been determined that we can repay the, a default loan from the program income? Is that a sufficient condition? I mean, or Tina, Mr. Seaman, okay.
Yep, then close it.
All right, is there a second? All right, it's been moved and seconded. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed?
Nope.
Hearing done, that motion carries unanimously. Please don't say no when I.
Sorry. I was just going to say we should move to item B.
That's confusing, all right. All, all, motion carries unanimously. Item six, this is a public hearing in consideration of approval of a contract with Redflex Corporation for installation of red light cameras per vehicle code section 21455.5.
I've got the uniform on, it's business tonight.
Yeah, he's, he's swinging it.
And, oh, oh, tonight he brings the gun. I see.
He's got all the stars and everything, look at him.
That's right.
Cue music.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Taser?
For non-compliant council members.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. We're pleased to have the opportunity to bring for your consideration tonight a contract with Redflex for red light cameras, a limited deployment of red light cameras in the city. I'd like to introduce some key players though in that before we begin. On our staff, key staff person was Donna Rosner, along with the deputy chief, whom you know and love. And then also from the Redflex Company, Wade Betancourt was here and instrumental in, in the proposal tonight and also a lot of work with the city attorney's office in working out the contract, which I'll tell you some details about that tonight. Anticipate that you have a lot of questions from our last presentation. We, we hope we'll answer those with the presentation. And those who didn't, I wore my body armor tonight, just in case, so. So just to quickly begin, the red light program generally enjoys broad support. This is a nationwide sampling of a survey back in June of '09 showing that 69% of the respondents support the red light cameras. We show you here a display of the top red light related collision intersections in our city. Now, this is a five-year survey and you can see we've had 500 collisions at these top 10 intersections related to right-of-way, what we describe as right-of-way violations. And so you can see we have a significant issue in the city, a significant public safety issue. And it varies from location to location, but that's why we're before you tonight because we're looking for ways to be effective and efficient in addressing this public safety There may be some education necessary to, to the community about what actually constitutes a red light violation in terms of, related to the cameras. And red light cameras only function when a vehicle enters an intersection fully on the red. And so let's assume your hood or bumper were across the right-of-way on the yellow and then the light turned red. That would not constitute a red light violation and a photograph would not be taken and a violation would not have occurred. So it's only someone who enters the intersection totally after the red is on. So that's an important point for people to know. It's also important to know, we think, that right-hand turns are not part of this program. That's been one of the major controversial items of a red light camera program is the right-hand turn issue where people do so-called the Hollywood stop or the California stop and they roll through, as they see it's safe, they roll through. Our program as it stands would not cover that. And the reason is because we, in doing the research, we didn't find a nexus between, you know, those right-hand turns on the red light, those rolling right-hand turns and any injuries related to vehicles versus pedestrians, vehicle versus bicyclists or other vehicles. And so there's no, it's not necessary to include that in the program. In the future, if we had a demonstrated need where we'd had a location where they had, you know, significant issues with red light, right-hand turns on red lights where it impacted pedestrians, bicycles or other vehicles, then we might consider that. But at this point, we don't have any of that evidence at hand. Really, again, the, you know, the main reason that we're here tonight is that, you know, red light runners endanger those of us that live, work and play here in West Sacramento is, is illustrated by the number of collisions that we have handled and at those top 10 locations. Of course, there's others besides those. Additionally, because of the nature of the, where the violations occur at the busiest and sometimes biggest intersections in the city, it's a dangerous enforcement situation for officers to really effectively enforce that. Plus it's such a, you know, such a limited resource. In fact, it would take, I think, as I shared before, just one intersection, to cover one intersection with an officer 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. You'd need, you'd need to have six officers to do that, just to cover one intersection the way that a camera will do. Plus the good thing about a camera, they don't take any breaks at Starbucks or Le Boue. And so they're constantly working, looking for violations.
Wait, what?
I don't know. There's a firefighter out there.
Okay, before you know it, we had the results of a 12-hour survey. So what we did was we ran numbers here locally of where our highest volume intersections for collisions and for citations based on right-of-way red light violations. And so Redflex came in and did a survey of those intersections for us, a video survey where they actually set up equipment, surveyed for 10 hour, or 12 hours. I believe it was six to six, six in the morning to six in the evening for 12 hours at these locations. And these are the intersections, the locations where violations, the numbers, you can see the numbers of violations captured during that time. And so the intersections in yellow are the intersections that would be part of the program if approved. And so it's two directions of, there'd be three intersections but four cameras because Evergreen Avenue, the north and southbound approaches of Evergreen both justify the installation of cameras. And then the others would be northbound Harbor at West Capital and northbound Jefferson at Park. Those would be the intersections. There's one kind of anomaly there, you may say, well, the number looks awful high at Jefferson and Lake Washington. And so why didn't that also make the, the list? And this is not just based, the, there's a formula that Redflex has that was developed by a university professor, I think the University of Texas or Texas, Texas. And so it's a complicated formula that takes in not only the number of violations, but it takes in the volume of traffic, the width of roadways, probably the barometric pressure, I'm not sure what else, but they calculate. sure what else, but they calculate what they see as the potential ongoing violations, and so that did not rise, despite the number of violations seen in that one 12-hour sampling, did not rise to the level at this time that it appeared it would justify camera at that point. So those are the three locations based on the surveys that were done. Again, that does not include any right-hand turn violations, those are just through and left-hand turn violations that you see there. And as compared, though, the other column to the citations that we, the average number of citations that we've written at those locations for the last five years, so you could see the disparity where the 12-hour survey, you know, in 12 hours, you know, dwarfs what the actual onsite enforcement activity has been for the average of those, average of those five years. Some terms of the contract, we have negotiated a shorter term than is typical to give the city the ability to remove itself from the contract without any financial commitment, and so normally Redflex does five-year contracts with one-year renewals. We've negotiated a shorter term again. We could have had even a shorter term than this, but it would involve some financial, some financial payments that we thought the city was better served to take this shorter term approach, and yet have no commitment beyond this period, so that's where that is. The cameras can be installed, depending on our side of the equation, and their work 60 to 90 days. All the work, repairs, maintenance upgrades, is provided by Redflex, and of course includes Part of the effort, of course, would be a large public education component. This is not only, you know, required by law, but obviously essential for community support. I think you don't get those kinds of results that are displayed in the survey without having any public education component. There'd be obviously a series of press releases that would be done about benefits, the actual community presentations, we're doing a series of community meetings in May, and if the program were approved, we'd, part of those presentations, part of those meetings, excuse me, would be a presentation on the red light program. Redflex provides, of course, a toll-free number to answer citizens' questions, and of course signage is mandatory, and the fact that once cameras go operational, there's a 30-day grace period, if you will, where violators are essentially, it's issued a warning and not a citation for that period of time. Budgetary considerations, to meet with the statutory law and court decisions, the cost of the program cannot be based on a per citation number, in other words, there has to be no incentive for the company to want to process citations that are, you know, not worthy. And so it's a flat-rate contract, it's a per-camera, per-month contract, regardless of the volume, and so just to show you that, we have calculated what it would take to cover the Redflex costs and our costs of overseeing and administering that contract. It's important, well, I'll wait till the next slide, but you can see that it would only take 1.38 paid citations, per camera, per day, to cover the costs of the program itself, something that we know would be sustainable, given the survey numbers and the formula that Redflex has used. And the last slide is going to address several considerations, issues that the council raised last time, we want to be responsive to, you know, your concerns. It's important to note that the cameras, they only, they only activate upon a violation occurring, in other words, they're not constantly running surveillance-type of cameras, and so they're not intrusive in that sense, as people are under surveillance. Throughout the city, you know, we have many locations, especially if you're on a Caltrans intersection, as Caltrans intersects with the interstate, there's 24-hour surveillance cameras there, many private businesses have 24-hour surveillance, and the city's even considering the installation of surveillance cameras to protect its interest in the Bardig Boat Ramp area and the public safety of that area, the city's even considering, but these cameras are not those type of cameras. They don't operate unless a car enters an intersection fully on the red, and then they take that violation and they're off again. Also, the privacy of passengers in the car is protected, the faces of other occupants of the car are obscured and not visible, we're not interested in who else is in that car and why they're in that car, we're only interested in the violation. We, it was talked about, can this look, you know, can this have the city look and feel? And yes, the city's name and logo will be used on all correspondence and citations so that it is a city, it is a city program. Really important key point of this is Redflex has no decision in the, if you will, the filing of these citations or the prosecution, if you will, of these, that's totally a police department decision. Part of the costs of the program are having an officer to review the citations that Redflex processes and sends to us, and then we make that determination, not anybody at some remote location, we make that decision here in the police department in West Sacramento. And so typically, their experience shows that about 75% of violations captured on video are appropriate for citation issuance, but it varies from jurisdiction to jurisdiction, so we won't know until we try it ourselves, but that's been typical experience in there. There was an issue about the red light cameras, and there have been some studies that show an increase in red light, excuse me, in rear-end collisions associated with red light. There's been others, though, where there hasn't been a demonstrated increase, but even in the, where there has been an increase, that increase has leveled off over time, so there's, it's initial, you know, getting used to that, that location of that camera, and then that rear-end issue tends to dissipate, and actually, though, the studies show too that those type of injuries from the rear-end braking collisions, even if you do have those, they're less serious with fewer fatalities than the front-to-side types of collisions that you get from a typical red light violation collision. There was also a question about, can we do this under the auspices of just the city and the municipal code, and we did the research and determined no, that that is something that we're not allowed to do, we're prohibited under law, it has to be done via the vehicle code, so we wanted to make sure that we have addressed that issue for you. That's all the presentation that we had, we hope that's addressed your questions, concerns, and we're ready to answer any questions that you have.
I see five hands, there's only, there's only four of you. Mr. Hanson?
Thank you, Chief, and I'm glad we're really, we're focusing really on the safety of these devices, and I think in the, just the economics of what we're going through now, it really seems to be a reasonable way to approach this safety issue, but a couple of questions. We're going through some renovations of that intersection on Evergreen and Harbor and that area, do you see that once those improvements are done, that the violations may change, so that may not be so high a priority, or is it just the nature of traffic there that is kind of the problem?
Yeah, the primary issue there is that north-south flow, and the changes that are taking place, and we've all been there, I know you have been there many times, and I've almost run through that light, the way the two sets of lights are hung, where the one farther back is right in your vision, and the set that's really yours is closer, that setup will not be changing, that's my understanding, that will not be changing, and so we don't expect, you know, at this point, that impact to change. If it did and didn't warrant that, then the equipment would be removed or relocated.
Yeah, that kind of, you know, into the next issue, that, you know, potentially some of these intersections are a little more dangerous, if there's adequate signage there as well to warn people about this. I know with the red light, red lights installed, we'll have red light signs, and it's going to be the violation on that, but, you know, obviously the more, I don't know if the more the better, but maybe the, you know, more strategically placed signs or light orientation may help the safety of those intersections as well.
Yeah, absolutely, signage is a key, key aspect of that. One thing I did forget to mention is typically your universe of violations is highest, obviously, in the first year, when people are not used to the cameras being there. Experience shows that at the beginning, during the second year, that violations captured are reduced by 34%, and so it does have an impact, it does have an effect, I should say, better choice of words, have effect on people's driving habits and improve safety in the community, where we see that fully one-third drop in violations after that first year, as people become educated about the cameras, and then there, it reaches a point, at some point, and it depends on jurisdiction to jurisdiction, 18 months, two years, where it reaches a plateau, where it drops, you know, maybe slightly below that and reaches a plateau, and then it continues out there.
Okay, and then just to be clear, on when these cameras will actually take a shot, it's, what is your, front bumper enters the outer crosswalk on red, just so people know exactly, you know, a lot of people, it's been a while since they've taken that...
What happens is that Redflex, of course, works with city traffic engineers, or in some cases, they're Caltrans intersections, like Park and Jefferson, and so the company works with the engineers responsible, and so what happens is there's an official limit line.
So you'll actually draw a line there, so it'll be evident?
You know, I'm not sure if there's, if there's an actual line, I think there is in each intersection, that's that limit line, and so when you cross that official limit line, and the cameras, the cameras now have pretty much been perfected after years of doing that, and so that when you cross that official limit line, that you're in the intersection on a red only, not on a yellow, then it would activate.
Okay. Are these photos in color or black and white?
Wade, I don't know. They are color, and one of the advantages of the Redflex system, which all the adjoining jurisdictions, except one, are using, is that they also are the only company that supplies a short video as well as the still photographs, and so that's also helpful, especially if these issues end up in court, that piece of evidence is important.
Okay, and then, and finally, on the outreach, I would really, the city is probably already looking at this, but City Lights and the website, and really get the word out that this is happening and not catch two bunit people by surprise, and I think that would save us all a lot of grief, and there's probably going to be, you know, some adjustment as these things are installed, if it's approved.
Absolutely, I think that's the real purpose of the 30-day grace period, much like we're doing with the parking situation here at the Civic Center and across the street, where we essentially have had a, by the end of this week, a three-week period of just issuing warnings to people, to get them educated and familiar, so that, all right, everybody knows. Now, if you see people doing it, you know that they're doing it consciously, and so...
All right, thank you.
Mayor Proton Bieges?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thanks, Chief, for the presentation, I think you've brought certainly enough information to us to make, or at least be, make an informed decision about kind of how to proceed, and I know you and I have had a lot of conversations about, you know, how it'd be utilized and to what extent, and I know that, you know, part of how these things work are that it generates a tremendous amount of revenue, it doesn't take a genius to look at the charts that you've presented to show that in a day we could capture what we've done, you know, in five years, and assuming that the cost of doing business doesn't get out of control, it could generate, you know, a pretty decent amount of money. And so you couldn't pick a better time to figure out, okay, this is a pretty good revenue generator, and times are tough, and so it would be, you know, something that we could potentially explore as a way to backfill losses from property and sales tax. So all that sounds good, it makes sense, and I think, and we spent a week of figuring out, you know, during our strategic planning, the council did at least, and management did as well, exploring different ways in which we could move forward with providing our core services, and there's no question about, you know, police services being a part of that. And so given all of that, I guess, part of it for me, and I still struggle with it, I'm interested in hearing what the rest of the council says about the issue, part of it for me, I think, is sort of a philosophical issue, aside from the financial one, which, you know, is kind of an easy, is an easy catch, I think for me, it runs a little bit deeper in that, you know, part of, at least for me, as an elected for the last nine years on the council, there's been a tremendous amount of, I would say, trust, maybe by the public, in us as, you know, electeds to move the city forward, and given, we've been given a lot of latitude in that, in that respect, and I say that because in part, we've come to the public several times with sales tax measures or property assessments, or, you know, occupancy tax issue, where the public has repeatedly supported proposals for us to, you know, essentially tax ourselves as a community, and that's given us tremendous amount of latitude, and I think that trust that we've built in the last several years has allowed us the latitude to do a lot of things in our community. And I guess, all that being said, I appreciate your, you know, attempt to try to bring forward what makes, on the surface, at least pencil-wise, a good proposal, I just don't know if at this time, given the economy and kind of where we're at, that, you know, a, lack of a better term, sort of a gotcha project, where a red light intersection, camera catching people, when we have officers who could catch people, obviously not at the same rate and not at the same revenue, that we would nearly, you know, you couldn't be further, you couldn't have a bigger difference in terms of the cost of doing it on a, you know, daily basis with police officers versus a contracted red light. Seems like an easy way to do it, an easy way to generate revenue, and I guess for me, I'm just not there yet, I think it's a good proposal, but I just don't know philosophically if it's the kind of thing that I want to do. It's not a Fair Oaks, it's not a Watt Avenue, it's not that yet, West Sac, we've been different on so many different levels, and I just think this is one more example that we're different than others, and I just am not ready to take that plunge yet.
I appreciate those remarks, and certainly understand those, and, you know, the violations we captured in the survey at those, on those four particular approaches that we were talking about, in the 12-hour, they were 45 violations in that 12-hour period, and I just illustrate that against the volume of traffic that passes through there, where people pass through lawfully, so I don't know what the volume of, but tens of thousands of vehicles on a daily basis pass through those intersections, and somehow 99.9% of the people manage to do it lawfully and safely, and it's a one-tenth of one percent that endanger us all, you know, us, our, you know, our families, our children, our pets, and so it seems to be a prudent safety, you know, thing to do, so...
Let me try to, typically, our departments, when they're presenting with their questions, certainly invite you to respond, but what I would like to avoid is treating a department head like the sixth member of the council, so in terms of responses to the policy statements that are being made, if we could limit ourselves, if there are questions for the chief, and then if the chief can respond to those, but rather than a back-and-forth on every point that gets made one way or the other, Mr. Kristof?
Hi, Chief, I'm interested in the appeal process. Somebody goes through and takes a picture, will it show both the front and the back of the car, so that, I mean, because a person can come and say, hey, you know, I was really in the yellow, and what appeal process do they have?
It does show both front and back, and it's just like any normal moving violation, you go to, if the ticket is issued, you go to traffic court, if you want to use the term, fight the ticket, you'd go to traffic court like everybody else. If an officer issued you one, and you didn't think he was correct, you'd take it to traffic court, same thing.
Well, the vast majority of people that I know that go to traffic court complain loudly because they never win, so, you know, the case seems to be pretty strong in whose ever favor. Okay, well, I mean, philosophically, I have the same problem, I just, I mean, it's, you know, if Officer Jones catches me speeding or something, or going through a red light, hey, I did it, but I mean, for some camera to catch me doing it, I just philosophically, I really have some issues with, but, okay, I'll keep an open mind.
Mr. Pierce?
Chief, what, can you expand a little bit on the impact this has over time in terms of creating a safer intersection? So, once these programs go in place, then is there formulas that have been worked to... So, once these programs go in, into place, then is there formulas that have been worked out? At what percentage we start getting better compliance at, at these intersections? Because it, it would seem to, to me that, that the whole point of this is not to catch people, but to make a safer intersection. I mean, if we're, if we go through this for any other reason, then we're doing a disservice. So do we have data? Or, or has data been reported to you that show how this impacts over time?
Yes, we do. And, you know, that's the, that's an excellent point. The whole goal is to eliminate the need for the cameras. And almost immediately, when the cameras become effective, uh, driving habits begin to change. And that's why you saw that significant drop after the first year, a thirty-four percent drop in the number of violations, uh, captured. And, and a continued drop till probably eighteen months, two years is where it hits its, uh, hits its plateau. And in some cases, there even been cases where, you know, cities have no longer for the need for the cameras and they're, they can be removed. Some cities have done that. So that is the goal.
Or they could turn them off for awhile.
You could turn them off, yeah.
Now, you also mentioned, and I think it's an important point, um, it's dangerous for police officers to proceed into intersections to chase people that have violated a red light. I mean, I certainly can see some of the intersections you've talked about. That, uh, wouldn't be the safest place for a motorcycle officer to have to be.
Exactly. Those are very difficult locations. You can, I know you're all very familiar with the Park and Jefferson intersection and the difficulties of, of safely, um, you know, enforcing that and policing in that environment. And that's, that's one of the concerns, yes.
Okay. And then, um, your, your staff report or the presentation said there was like a hundred collisions in those intersections over five years. So what, what amount of time does it take for an officer to have to respond to each of those accidents in terms of just literal staff time? I mean, you know, once the accidents occurred, of course, but there, there's a huge investment of time, not just from the scene, but then follow-up in, in terms of all the litigation associated with that, uh, in, in terms of your staff time. Which is, all of this is eliminated under this program.
Correct. Uh, you know, in a less complicated collision scene, uh, you would have two officers, uh, involved in that investigation for a, a minimum of about an hour each. And that's in a less complex. A more complicated scene would be more officers and longer timeframes and possibly even CSI.
Well, plus, plus the fire department and, and a lot of city response. And, and while I can certainly appreciate a philosophical view, the, the truth of it is, this is a tried and true police, um, procedure that's, that's accepted by the courts. It's, it's gone through a lot of, uh, gyrations. And it is, um, it is what it is. But, but for us, um, it's going to make those three intersections, if, if that's where we were to start, um, is going to have almost an immediate impact on making those safer, uh, intersections for the, for the public. Plus do it at, at essentially no cost to the city.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
I actually have a bunch of questions about the, the details of it, um, uh, and particularly the details of the contract. So maybe we could go through some of that. First, with respect to the scope of the camera, because this has come up at our last meeting, Mr. Johansson just raised the issue. I don't see anywhere in the agreement any controls on that, that the orientation of the cameras and what's being taken a photo of and whether the face is obscured. I, doesn't seem, I, I, maybe it's in here, but I don't see in the contract any control we have to protect the privacy of, we're, we're essentially allowing a private company to get into the public right away in public equipment to take pictures of people in their vehicles. We don't want them taking a picture of people. We want, we, the idea is that they would take pictures of their vehicles. But I don't see how we have control over that under, uh, under the terms of the agreement.
Right. I don't, it's that specific language, I don't believe is in the contract. That's the standard operating practice, the standard industry-wide practices that you don't, uh, see occupants, you do see the driver, but you don't see other occupants of the vehicle. And that's just the standard practice.
Well, I worry about, I mean, it, it feels to me, given the staff, the PowerPoint, whatever, that a lot of this has been prepared by Redflex. And so I just, I'm, I'm trying to come at this from a, because I am a skeptic of the program. Um, and, and our interests are not the same as the company's. And so, and the interests of, of our residents and, and visitors and, and, uh, workers in town aren't the same interest of the company necessarily. So I, I just want to make sure that the agreement, not just the company's past practice or their representations or their brochures, but our actual agreement fully protects us and the residents. So to me, that's an area that, that, um, uh, you know, is important. And I don't, I see in the agreement restrictions on what we may do with the pictures and the other stuff, that we, we warrant that we will not use them to break anybody's confidentiality. I don't see similar restrictions on Redflex in, in the agreement. Um, and I'm more concerned about, uh, private companies' employees sharing that information, sharing information about drivers than I am about our police officers doing so. But the agreement flips that on its head and puts more of that, uh, more of the controls on us than on, on, on the company. The agreement allow, it's a three-year agreement, but allows the, uh, city manager to extend the term. If we, if we were to ultimately ad- adopt this, there's no way I would support something that did not have that via vote of the city council. Um, this is too, there's too many outstanding questions and to, and even if we were to approve it, there's too, there have been too many concerns raised to have that simply be an administrative action. So the term is, and we don't have the right to terminate without cause. So there's, if, if we could not a year and a half from now say, "This is, this isn't working out. We don't like it. We want to terminate it." That's not allowed under this agreement. And so the one-year extensions, definitely, if we were to have an agreement like this, would need to be something that would have to come, uh, here. The termination with cause provisions are, are, you know, they're, they're, they're what you would expect. They don't include things like if the voters of this city were to pass a referendum or an ballot initiative at a future date. See, not a referendum, because a referendum could undo the, the work of a contract. But if the voters were to adopt an initiative, um, at the end of this year or two years from now, banning red light cameras, as they have done in several cities across the country, as I understand it, despite the public opinion poll that Redflex shared with us, um, in every city where this has been on a voter referendum, it's failed. But so if the voters were to, were to, were to ban them, there's no provision in the agreement that allows us, um, to, to effectuate the, the voter's will. That's important. The bigger threat, well, I'm not saying it's bigger, but as big a threat is that the state, um, will get in this business. We already know the governor has proposed that the state, uh, adopt a, or that the state get into the business by authorizing cities like us to use red light cameras for purposes of monitoring and enforcing speeding violations. But the state would capture eighty-five percent of the revenue. And so, uh, clearly, the states, with the red light cameras have the state's attention. And it's not too hard to imagine a creative and imaginative governor or legislature, even three days from now, saying, "Well, there's already the revenue from red light cameras. Why don't we change the distribution formula? Since cities really aren't spending that much money on enforcement, they don't have to have that officer out on the street doing the work. It's just a camera taking a picture. The city's just a transactional agent. Maybe the state should capture more of that revenue." That, I think, is a real threat, um, as more and more, as more and more places adopt it, uh, that, that's definitely a problem. There's no provision in this agreement that says, "If the revenue shares change, if there's no longer pencils for us because the state has, has decided to divert the revenue, we cannot terminate the agreement for that reason." That, to me, is an important, uh, area that we would, uh, that we would want to pay attention if we were to adopt a contract. Because even though we're talking about safety, I mean, even the comments, some of our comments have been, you know, given the economy, we need to do this, given our budget. Uh, we need to be, as Mr. Viegas said, honest with ourselves and with the community. This was not on our agenda, uh, two years ago. Um, you know, the intersections were just as problematic. And Mr. Christoph cut me off, uh, three years ago at Park and Jefferson. I'm sure he was, he was violating the red light. Um, the intersections haven't gotten worse. We're looking at this because of the budget. And we need, and, and that's a legitimate reason. But we, we need to be, um, you know, honest with, with, with the public, that that is one of the, the rationales. But that would be severely undercut if the state were to, to get engaged. The, about where these intersections, uh, where, where we do install cameras, Exhibit A, um, you know, has a procedure by which we would, um, determine where the intersections would be by mutual agreement between the city and the contractor. Um, and ultimately, the city has the sole and exclusive right to make the final determination. But we, the agreement commits us to be reasonable in our, in, in, in that negotiations around mutually agreeing. How we enforce the, the laws and where we choose to enforce them, at what level, is purely a decision for government. That is not a choice. That is not an issue that should be subject to mutual agreement with any private company, especially a private company that has a financial interest in the outcome. So, uh, although the, the end result here is fine, this whole paragraph about having mutual agreement in negotiations, it's not a matter for negotiation. It's not a matter for mutual agreement at all. It is sole, it is solely and exclusively our right to determine, uh, where and how we're going to enforce the, the laws. That's, that, the people expect that that's going to be government's choice, not a private company. So as we look at this agreement, I, I'm not, I, I should be obvious, I'm not prepared to vote for this tonight, for sure. Because I think even on the, even if we, even if we agreed with the general policy, the agreement itself needs a lot of work. But Exhibit A is definitely an area where all this language about mutual agreement, I think, is, is inappropriate in a democracy that we would see to, to a private company that responsibility. On the compensation issue, I just want to be, I want to understand better. There's in Exhibit D, uh, where it talks about cost neutrality is guaranteed, um, uh, except if we fail to maintain the minimum yellow light change interval as established by the Institute of Transportation Engineers. And the issue's an important one, because there's been a lot of allegations across the country that, uh, cities have misused, that have, have sort of rigged the game by minute, by, you know, setting low, a, a small amount of time that, that the light's yellow so that it'll, you'll, you, you know, you think you have a moment to get through the light, but you actually don't. Change is red on you and, and you get a, you get an expensive ticket. Does this, this does not mean, I hope, I hope that we, we would have to, that we would have to use the minimum yellow light interval. It, it, it means we have to maintain at least the minimum yellow light interval. Is, can I just be absolutely sure that that's what this language says? Okay. Then, uh, so then just on the, on the overall, um, approach, part of the problem I have with this is, in addition to the comments that have been made, is that, uh, you know, there's a basic economics, a basic theory that underlies government enforcement and government regulation that says, "Look, um, we, people violate laws. We don't have the capacity, government does not have the capacity to catch every violation." Uh, we, we can't do it. Whether it's speeding or people dumping trash or cities dumping sewage into the river, we can't catch every single violation. Therefore, what we will do is to say, even though we'll only catch it one percent of the time, it's going to cost you so much that that one percent of the time, if you do get caught, it will be a severe pain to you. You know, it may put you out of business if you, if you do that. Uh, and that's why in a lot of these arenas where we don't catch most of the speeders, we have fines that are, what, three hundred, three fifty, three hundred and seventy dollars? They're very expensive tickets, um, because most of the time you will not get caught. Red light cameras change the game. And they say, "Most of the time now, you will get caught. But we're still going to price the penalty as though you have a low probability of being caught." That's, that turns the whole notion of how, how enforcement, uh, law enforcement penalties are supposed to work. They're supposed to bear a relea- a reasonable relationship to the probability that you're going to get caught and a probability of the harm that's being done to society. So if you're going to substantially, by a factor of ten or twenty or a hundred, increase the probability that you're going to get caught if you break the law, then the fine structure ought to be different. And it isn't. It's, what we're saying is we're, we're, we're rigging the game. So we're going to use the oldest, we're going to use the old fines on the chance that you would get caught one out of a hundred times. Now you're going to get caught eighty times out of a hundred, but we're still going to charge you the same thing. That, I think, is, is not, it's, 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 doesn't keep faith, uh, with the, with the public as we're trying to make the case that this is really about safety and not about money. So that's, to me, the, the biggest concern I have about this sort of approach. It's just, there's something, I, I've thought about it for awhile since October. Something didn't seem right. Something didn't seem fair. And, you know, and then I thought more about the way that we handle violations of the law generally. And then it just doesn't gel with that, um, that we're charging too much for something that we're going to catch you for virtually every single time. And we know it. Uh, we're reducing our cost of enforcement. We're going to catch you more and we're going to charge you the same. It's a big, um, economic transfer in a time when, uh, when, you know, citizens can't afford that, for sure. But I just, it doesn't, it just doesn't feel, um, honest to me. Doesn't, the integrity of this sort of a fine structure doesn't, doesn't feel right to me. And given, as Mr. Viegas has said, the, the, the great faith that the people of the city have placed in us on matters of financial and ethical and everything else, I just, it's, I'm just not comfortable going there at the, you know, at this stage. But we do have one request to speak, actually. So why don't we go there and then we'll turn to the council for further discussion. That's by Mr. Lowell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, William Lowell of West Sacramento, for the record. Uh, I'm not going to, I'm not going to demand I have as much time as you had. I thought this was supposed to be revenue neutral, but apparently that's been taken out of the factor. That was the way it was previously. And, um, I'm not sure where I want to start here, but, uh, over there in Davis at the bus, on the bus lines at the bus shelters, they've got these various warning stops with the stop signs, uh, warning people to stop at the stop signs and so forth like that. So we might consider that as a preventive measure. And, uh, and like, like they do in Davis, uh, before you approach a fire department, they've got these signs that indicate a fire station is ahead and so forth. And, let's see, um, to, to say that we're not going to catch right turn violators, we're not going to capture right turn violators, the, I, I say the non-stoppers should be captured because many times I've walked across West Capitol at West Acre and, or I was about to, I should say, uh, and I would see cars coming on West Capitol and they weren't going to stop on that red light. And, and I was putting my arms back to keep other pedestrians from stepping into that non-moving vehicles path. And so I don't, I don't see why they should be, uh, left out of that. And, and I guess this is not relevant to that three, three strikes law. And about two weeks ago, there was an article in the Bee indicating that a guy had stolen a hundred and five dollars. And he was going to be put away for twenty-five years to life for, under the three strikes law. And yet, within two or three days, some guy had admitted embezzling over eight million dollars from senior citizens' homes. And, and he was let out on some kind of parole. I mean, I, I think, I think we have to analyze this business of imprisoning these people that steal tiny amounts of stuff. It's, uh, I say imprison the big, the bigger criminals. And the old slogan, "An ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure," well, that saves a lot of accidents, too. So, a lot of, a lot of injuries, so. You can sort of put that all together, I guess, and let it, let it go at that. But, uh, I think, I think we should, I think we should have them. And I think, hey, let's, let's lower the fines. Uh, make it revenue neutral. If we're going to capture eighty-five, ninety-five percent of them, well, let's reduce the penalty for, you know, to about twenty percent.
Thank you, Mr. Lowell. Alright, that was all our, our only requests. So return back to the council for, for their discussion. Mr. Johansson, followed by Mr. Beers.
Well, I, um, I mean, I think, uh, Mr. Lowell brings up a good point that we haven't really talked about. We talked it a bit about tangentially in the terms of safety, but I've received a number of calls about bicyclists and pedestrians in that whole Harbor Boulevard area that, um, it's just, it's a really dangerous walk or really dangerous ride right now. And, and what we're trying to do in the city is, is calm the neighborhoods down with, with, um, speed bumps and different type of, of calming measures. You know, I, I think, um, there, there may be a point to making this revenue neutral and maybe adjusting the fines. Because again, in, in my view, this is not, it's not the revenue, it's the safety that we're really looking at. And I know I travel the, well, I try not to get on the Park and Jefferson and go the other way. But when I do go on that, that, that particular intersection, particularly in the mornings, it's a nightmare. You have people making double turns, double right-hand turns going onto the freeway. And it's just, it's, it's, and I've, I've been at that intersection and seen an accident before. So it is a big problem. Um, I, I think the mayor has, has a good point as, as far as not being punitive. And I'm not sure about the, the whole, um, social argument on, on penalties in general. But, you know, I think what people in West Sacramento are looking for is, is a little more safety on their roads, particularly when we start looking at different modes of transit here, bicycling and walking, that we really have to start looking at this and really be serious about this.
Mr. Beers?
The point has come about the fines a couple of times. I just want to supply a piece of information. Uh, this is a vehicle code violation. The city has no ability to-
That's what I was going to ask.
-to set the fine. It's a, it's a state function. And it's just like all violations, you know, Yolo Superior Court, which is an entity of the state. the state, sets the bail schedule for violations, and we have no control over that. Now, there's a formula by which, you know, the city receives a share of that, but we, it's not a local decision, that we are in control of to set that, that fine. It's a, it's a state-level decision of what the fines are. And it varies from county to county. In Sacramento, I believe the last time I've heard it there, it's $471. Here in Yolo County, I think it was for last year, and I don't know if it's changed, it was $380. But we don't have the ability to, to impact that, so.
Mr. Beers.
Well, it's always, it's always the obscure issues that kind of bring out all these conversations. We pass multi-million dollar projects with less discussion. But I, I think there's, it, it's a fascinating discussion to me. I, I actually was unable to attend the October meeting, but I looked at the minutes and was surprised at the amount of discussion that had come up, and now I'm seeing it firsthand. And I, I respect and appreciate it all. I, on the fine issue, I was pretty sure I was going to get that clarification from you, but, but the other side of that is, I, I know 100% of the people that are hit in an intersection by somebody that's violated a red light, wonder why the city hasn't had a cop there protecting their, their interest in that, in that particular example. And, and if we were to fuss with the fines, it seems like we're trying to find what's the economic level that people would not want to risk running a light. You know, I, I wouldn't want it to get to an economic decision. I would like the 100% of the people, Mr. Kristoff included, if he, if he did that before.
Yeah, but the only thing, I saved him.
No, and I jest on that, but I mean, I, I think the, the fine should be an appropriate level of, of dollars to, in fact, make that one person never want to make that same, same decision again. I, I think that's the only way we have to impact people from making bad judgments, and, and feeling like, you know, my chances, if, if I look at the data that the city just so kindly put onto the web, and we're, we're watched as much as the Grammys, now everybody in the world knows that your chances of getting caught at any one of our intersections is about zero, you know, effectively, over time. So, so it is, it is an important debate. The discussion of revenue, though, really should get back into what, what should our share of those dollars be used for. I mean, we would have control of that, so if we were, we were to say, you know, we want to invest in some sort of a prevention program, or traffic school, or, you know, where did we want those revenues to go to improve public safety in, in, in a cause-and-effect kind of relationship? I think that would be an appropriate discussion, but I, I really do, I think we're, we're, we're where we're at in terms of this discussion, but I, I really do think that we need to be sure that we're evaluating this proposal against our, our stated goal of providing a very safe environment for people in this community. And, and I know, not that I've ever, well, actually, I did get hit by a red light guy one time, but, but I know that those people that are hit by that, that's devastating to their lives and futures, and, and lives for, for that matter. It, it, it just doesn't seem to me that we, we should challenge the, the impact of this device, as much as, if we want to get into the, where the revenues go, or how that, that we invest fine money, I think that's a, a much richer discussion that we could use to, again, try and improve safety in the city. I wouldn't vote for this on a, on a basis of, it's a revenue generator. That, that would, that would, as, as others have said, that would be a violation of my responsibility. That's not why we, we should do this. But we recognize that there is going to be revenues associated with it, so, so it's a fair discussion item. But I don't know that we want to, at least for me, I don't want to change the dynamics of the discussion, and not do something that will make people safer, without question, based on where we spend the money. We can control that piece separately, so.
Further discussion?
Oh, sure. I've been turned down before. No, I would like to-
You need, I, I'm sorry, Mr. Kristoff. I'm sorry. No, I mean, I, I think, Christopher, you made some very good points, as far as the, the document, the contract itself. I mean, and until it gets straightened out-
Yeah, that's what I was going to talk about.
Okay, never mind. Please, move forward then.
Yeah. What, what I would like to ask essentially the city manager and city attorney is, the, the issues that the mayor raised, as far as the actual contract, those issues are important issues that I think we should not vote on in a vacuum. And I, I would want to know what your reading would be, is, in terms of, before we vote, I, I don't think the, the nature of some of those, I think they're probably sensitive enough in terms of the negotiations with, with the vendor, that they, you can't just assume you could fix all of those. So I, I would, would propose that we actually direct staff to address the, the issues raised on the contractual issues tonight, and then to bring it back for a final decision by the council. That's where I was headed.
Okay. It's been moved in seconded. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Nope. That motion carries three to-
Three to two.
No, why?
Didn't you, didn't you vote?
I mean, I'd kill the whole project, but I mean, I'll give you, I'll give you, you know, at least a, a look at what the contract's going to be. So I voted yes.
Okay, that's, that's what I thought.
Me, too.
All right. Okay, item seven, thank you. Item seven is public hearing in consideration of Resolution 10-8, providing for participation in the California First program of California communities, in consideration of Resolution 10-9, authorizing the county of Sacramento to apply for funds on behalf of the city of West Sacramento. Mr. Goodwin.
Good evening, mayor and council. I'm excited, as a member of the Green Team, to be before you, to talk about an exciting program as part of statewide AB 811, a municipal financing program, signed by the governor in July of 2008, intended to allow financing of long-term energy improvements, and residential energy, and commercial retrofits. AB 811 is a voluntary financing program designed to bring down the cost of improvements to consumers through economies of scale. It's repaid through property tax bills, and the repayment transfers through ownership California First is a, is a program put together through, is currently an offering through, through California Communities. It is a consortium of 14 counties and 146 cities. It's intended as a pilot program to initiate AB 811 programs in those counties and cities, and as an offering statewide. The target date for the rollout of the program is June 2010. California Communities has put together a program with a backbone of education as a process and rollout to both the property owner and the contractors that will be implementing the improvements. The financing process, or the, the process to the, the homeowner, will be first and foremost, education. Property owners will be able to visit the California First website, or, or portal, to determine the, the program and the eligibility requirements, and submit an application. Review and approval will be through California First. They will handle the reservation and application process. And installation will be, will be done by licensed eligible contractors, and it will meet all local codes, and they will be required to obtain permits, and submit final building permits at, at closure. Funding for residential projects is maximum of $75,000, or 10% of the property value. For commercial projects, it's 10% of the property value. The California First proposal covers opt-in costs for municipalities that participate. There is no cost to the cities or municipalities that participate in the program. It provides local programmatic support, marketing, and education. It will assist in administrative support, and it will help fund staff support to date. It will assist in setting up, not only marketing and programming, but local storefronts. The, the pilot goal is to install initial improvements of up to 5,000 properties by March of 2012. The initial bond rollout is estimated to be at 15 to 25 million, and it's just dependent on activity and participation. The property owner benefits are voluntary, they are voluntary assessments. The property owners are incentivized to invest in energy-efficient investments here in the city, in Yolo County. The benefits to the city are a no opt-in cost, and administrative and marketing support. There are no bonds to issue or repay. California First, and will handle that. There, there are, it will be a private investment and economic development catalyst, and it is consistent with the city's energy efficiency efforts and goals. That concludes my presentation. I am happy to answer questions.
All right, Mr. Johansson.
Thank you, Randy. Now, now, the, the goal of this, the primary goal is to increase the installation of energy-efficient equipment.
Correct.
Now, is job creation also part of this?
Job creation is a significant part. There is an estimation in the California First proposal that there is an initial job creation of up to 2,000 jobs. There is an association with Los Rios Community College, and the state to roll out green-collar jobs in association with this program.
Yeah, I think, you know, in light of our shop local, think local, and our effort to engage more, you know, more business to people in West Sacramento, it sounds like there's also training money available within this, but, but I would, I would want to see in a program that you would outreach to the community, because, you know, obviously, a lot of this installation work can go to people and businesses that are located within West Sacramento. And to have a program to outreach to our community about if this grant is successful, that this work is going to be available, and if there's, for example, additional, additional training that needs to happen, in order for some type of certification for installation, to maybe see if we can work that into, like, a training program in, in West Sac, and really help some folks out in this town.
Mr. Beers.
Yeah, the, the proposal, you know, is, is fine. I mean, this is the kind of direction that, you know, I think we should be going in. I was initially troubled, though, it was somewhat explained to me about the high administrative costs, so I'd, I'd like to just go into that a little bit more, because, you know, the staff report actually doesn't even reference the bond, it just talks about the $16.5 million for the grant. So, of that, $6 million was going to be used to buy down interest rates, and then $10 million of it's designated for administration, and $500,000 isn't accounted for. But what's, what's the, what's the nature of these, these costs? Are these ongoing costs, and, and, and/or just clearly startup, and there's no out-year costs? And who pays for the out-year costs, if there are out-year costs? I mean, because it, to, to spend $16 million to raise 20, you know, is starting to, you know, not meet some of the smell tests, unless it's, it's really legitimate, the only way we can get this going, but in the out-years, there's, there's no, virtually no administrative costs, or not anywhere near this percentage.
Correct. This is, this is a pilot program, and not only being a pilot program, it is statewide, between the 14 counties and the, the 146 cities. And California First, California Communities are assuming the risks to set up the program, and the initial rollout of the, of the financing, or the, the micro-bonds, the pooling of the, of the money. And it is heavy on the front end, as a pilot program. It is set up to be sustainable, and as the bonds roll out, the administrative and marketing systems are set up within the municipalities that are participating. So, that is a front-end cost, and it is anticipated that as it rolls out, those, those costs are static, and there will be sustained costs, but they'll be rolled into the program to-
Well, how much are you in? Well, and, and again, I'm just, I'm just trying to understand. So, I can accept a startup cost, and I've looked at the, the list, and everybody's got a certain amount of money they, they believe they need to, to further this, and for that many communities, et cetera, maybe it's not a lot of money. But the out-year cost, so, are, are you saying this, that the ongoing cost will be, there'll be a surcharge on every loan that is made to reimburse, or how are you going to do it? And what are those costs projected to be? Because, again, it has to be a workable number. I don't, I don't want a program that, that says it's going to be successful, and really, at the end of the day, we have, you know, supported a number of staff to make a, a program, but very few loans go out.
The, the California First application, as, as was pointed out, is an application to the Energy Commission to assist in not only setting up the, the front-end administrative costs, but to help to buy down the interest rate-
Right.
...of the initial bond rollout.
No, I'm talking about-
I, I'm sorry. And, and with that, to set, to bring in enough activity to have a large rollout, 25, even 50 million of the initial bond sales. With that, the intent is to create a sustained program, that there will be a percentage, and, as, as far as the, the financing end, I'll, you know, I'd have to defer to California First, but it's my understanding that it would be a percentage on each loan. There, there would be a mechanism to the program that would make it sustainable, that these costs, as you see them, create the program, and that- these costs, as you see them, create the program and that a mechanism to sustain it would be rolled into ongoing loans as the program went forward.
So, so at this point, though, you haven't seen any of the data that, so is it five percent of each loan is going to be administrative cost? So we don't know that, that number yet?
No, I don't.
Okay.
Mr. Kristoff.
My questions were along the same line. So if we're going to retrofit houses, how many houses are going to get retrofitted with the first issuance? Because it seems, I think Mr. Beers is absolutely right. This thing is so heavily loaded towards administration at the front end, nothing can get done. I might be able to go out and, you spent sixteen million dollars and I may be able to fix ten houses, but overhead costs have taken everything away. I, 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 I know that that can't be the case, I hope, but I, I, I just, as I read through all this, I, I couldn't, I couldn't grasp it. I couldn't figure it out.
It's, it's dependent on the, on the bond sales and the activity in the program. It, it, it could be the intent of the program and the target is the fifteen to twenty-five million initial bond. And that's separate and aside from the sixteen point five that California First has applied for to the Energy Commission. That's a, that's a, that's completely separate and aside. They're not, they're not tied together. And depending on the activity, they'll, they'll either have pooled bonds. If they have a lot of upfront activity, they'll pool the bonds and have fifteen, twenty, five, fifteen million.
So what you're telling me is you've gone through all of this. This isn't just a program to where we're going to hire people at large salaries to do some work and, and, and nothing's going to get done, or I shouldn't say that, very little is going to get done to do what their task really is. I mean, it is to go out and retrofit homes, is to go out and, and do some things.
Correct.
And I just didn't see where that, there was sufficient funds to retrofit as many homes as should apply to the program. Everything seemed to be tilted toward, you know, we got to pay Jimmy, Bob, and Ray, and Susan, and Michael a whole bunch of money upfront and, you know, and then whatever trickles down, we'll be able to, you know, retrofit a couple of homes. That's what I saw. And, but what you're telling me is that's not the case?
No.
Okay.
That, that's, that's to market the program.
Okay.
And then the funding will come as a loan directly to the homeowner. And it will really be up to the homeowner and their contractor to decide the level of improvements. And they...
Yeah, I think part of, we've been working on this program with the city and Yolo County, the, the climate change work group that Yolo County convened. Supervisor Rexrood's been chairing. I've got Cindy here, she's going to talk in a little bit, on this, on this initiative even before AB eight eleven. Berkeley, the city of Berkeley, the county of Sonoma, I think the city of Palm Desert, maybe others, had launched their own programs that were similar to this, but did not have an external bond source. We couldn't do that here because we're not a charter city. So we don't, we don't have the authority necessary that, that some of these other jurisdictions had in order to implement a program. It's, I think that it's partly confusing because of the way the, the staff report describes the application. The application is for the program, but that's not, the six million, so it looks like a lot, right? We should be spending eight and a half million for coordination and marketing and another one and a half for administration, and then only six million for the buying down the interest rates. But the six million is not the actual total amount of money being spent on the retrofits. It's a small portion of it. The advantage to the homeowners isn't really principally the buy-down. It's being able to access this financing, pay it through your taxes, not having to go to a bank and get, get, you know, get, get a loan for solar equipment or whatever you're going to do as part of the project. So even without the interest buy-down, it still would be a valuable program for homeowners and for other property owners. The six million just, just makes it even more so. And so what, what you're saying is that twenty-five million dollars plus the six million dollar buy-down, that's, that's leveraging a lot of, and plus, you know, other monies that the homeowner may spend that they're not borrowing against. That, that amount of administrative cost is leveraging a lot of actual energy retrofits.
Yes.
So it's just, I think, because the application itself is focused on the programmatic costs. So we're actually fortunate, Berkeley had to pay for all this stuff by itself. And so did Sonoma. This opens up the AB eight eleven and this consortium and the collaborative that we're doing both locally and then the statewide stuff allows us to do this essentially for nothing at the city and get reimbursed for our costs. So it's, to me, it's a very positive step forward and it builds on the work that we, we, along with Yolo County, helped start, launch, helped started to launch in two thousand seven, two thousand eight around the whole climate change work. And it's a very smart way of getting that done without putting our, us at risk while giving a, a very important new option to our homeowners and businesses in the community and create, and so that creating a lot of potential jobs in terms of those retrofits as well.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, this is very similar to the Neighborhood Stabilization Program where we were able to get this, get an opportunity and get our place at the, at, at the door, so to speak, to get the money. And then guidelines will be coming back to the council as the program is fine-tuned.
Okay. Are there questions at this time? All right, thank you, Mr. Goodwin. And we do have a couple of requests to speak on this. And the first is from Cindy Tuttle.
Mayor, members of the council, Cindy Tuttle, speaking as a West Sacramento resident and as an employee of Yolo County. First, as a West Sacramento resident, I do urge your support for this innovative program because it will allow many of us who have for years wanted to do energy efficiency and solar projects on their home, it's been very cost prohibitive. And this will allow us an alternative financing mechanism to maybe perhaps get some of that work done and save energy and save on our utility bills. Now, speaking on behalf of Yolo County, I'm just here to answer any questions you may have. The county and all three of our other cities have adopted similar resolutions that are before you today. And again, we're here to answer any questions you may have on behalf of the county. Thank you. Urge your support.
All right. Thank you. John Vanilla?
John Vanilla, a lifetime resident of Broderick and West Sacramento. Anyway, I just had a friend in Sacramento go through a similar situation like this with smud. And it took a while to get the loan going and all that stuff. They had to pick out the cool roof and the insulation and the windows and all the whole works. It's working out for her. She's retired and it's going to be a good deal setup for her. So I'm hoping a similar situation would happen in West Sacramento and Yolo County so we can move this forward. I think it'd be good for the residents of West Sacramento. And that's what I'm speaking for tonight.
All right, thank you. All right, those are all the requests to speak. So we'll turn to the council for further discussion. Mr. Beers.
Yeah, and, and as I, as I prefaced my original comments, the staff report neglected to show the, the leveraging that this was after. And so I, I certainly can't argue with where this is headed. I mean, this is really innovative and, and I'm happy to see the direction going there. I was just concerned when I was looking at the ratio of costs to benefit and it's like, wait a minute, you know, what, what exactly are we buying here? I would still, not, not now, but I, as this rolls forward, I would certainly like to have some confidence that, that the administrative fees that are built into each loan are, are not prohibitive too, or that there's cost controls, you know, that we're, we're not enriching the bureaucracy for, for, for a broad term. And not to be critical because I'm a lifelong bureaucrat, so what can I say? But, but no, we don't want a program that, you know, has that feature that just enriches itself, you know, and tries to make it go. So I would want to be sure that we, where we have influence, make sure that that's kept to what's absolutely necessary, so.
Further comments? Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, this is a public here.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, and I didn't open. I'll open the public hearing. We've already heard from all the folks, we will incorporate their comments by reference. All right, seeing that, then we'll close the public hearing. Mr. Beers.
Yeah, I'd be happy to move that we adopt Resolution ten eight authorizing the city of West Sacramento to join the California Communities California First Program and adopt Resolution ten nine authorizing Sacramento County to act as a collective lead agency bidder to apply for and receive funding for a pilot program for the California First Program on behalf of the city of West Sacramento.
All right, it's been moved by Mr. Beers and seconded by Mr. Johannesen, seeing no further discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, hearing done. That motion carries. Item eight is a public hearing in consideration of Resolution ten dash one providing for amendments adding volume four Bridge District Architectural Design Guidelines to the Bridge District specific plan and first reading of ordinance ten dash three providing for plan development number forty-one amendments amending the text to add architectural design guidelines. Mr. Ramirez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One second, we're kind of transferring over some technology to your screen. Yes. Good evening, Mayor, council members. Tonight, staff is requesting your approval of the Bridge District Architectural Design Guidelines. Staff has been working with the property owners of the Bridge District for the past seven months to develop a set of guidelines that are flexible and predictable. The architectural guidelines are a qualitative document that allows development projects a degree of flexibility when a project design is considered. The framework of the document is structured around sixteen design guidelines that should be considered when designing a project within the district. To assist with project design and support of the design guidelines, the document includes considerations for the designers and owners to follow when designing a particular project. These considerations are not requirements, but guidance towards achieving the intent of the architectural design guidelines. The property owners and designers will have maximum flexibility when designing a project and have the ability to develop alternative considerations provided they demonstrate the intent of a particular guideline. The administrative process and review of a project will continue to follow the city's design review process. As the council may recall, when volumes one through three were brought forward in November oh nine, the property owners expressed concern that building height and massing regulations were too restrictive and asked council to consider no height limits or massing regulations within the district. At this meeting, the council removed the issue from volume one and directed that building height and massing regulation be addressed within the architectural design guidelines. When staff brought this issue to the Planning Commission workshop, the commission attempted to find a solution and compromise with the owners, but it became apparent that a visual aid was necessary. So the commission directed staff to return with a visual aid to explore the pros and cons that may develop should unlimited heights and no massing restrictions be permitted within the district. The commission found that the model that you're about to view to be helpful and useful to come to a decision to permit unlimited heights and no massing controls throughout The model before you tonight is designed to represent future conditions and reflects accurate data within the bridge districts such as street right-of-way dimensions and existing contexts such as Rayleigh Field, the Tower Bridge, and most importantly, the amount of entitlement allowed on individual parcels. The expected build-out is based on nine point six million of development. And if we were to like to see twelve and a half million, we would anticipate about thirty percent more of development, which would lead to increased building heights. The colored roofs in the model represent parking garages, which is about half of the maximum in the district due to the district's vision to be a transit-oriented development. Staff has tried to show you a variety of building forms and infinite amount of building designs in this model that could be developed based on the amount of entitlements allotted for each parcel. What we have concluded is that in large part, the entitlements drive development, which controls the shapes of buildings and offers choices for the developers or property owners to construct low to mid-rise buildings or possibly taller slender buildings. This results in height controls without establishing regulations. So it is likely, based on the model, that without the transfer of entitlements, we could see a max, a mixture of low to mid-rise buildings and a few tall buildings throughout the district. We also determined with the model that the presence of garages forces verticality. Early garages will likely be freestanding and this could force heights on the balance of the block. And this is based on the square footage of a garage being transferred to the building square footage. We also determined that market conditions drives development. So in some cases, we may see larger state office buildings with larger floor plates, but also could see smaller floor plates represented in residential type of development structures. Definitely, economics and market conditions control this issue. Clearly, early rents will only support what the market bears and we are likely to see low rent, rents which support and finance low to mid-rise structures initially, but through time, higher rents may generate taller structures. With early low-rise structures, porosity becomes less of an issue and views will be maintained and controlled by the intensity of development. Some owners also will elect to preserve portions of the site where that can be, where they can build taller structures. This assumes a parcel will have some entitlement in the bank or they may be able to tap the bank for additional entitlement. Lastly, view corridors with two-story minimum street wall heights control massing at the street level and allows towers to be stepped back in some cases, but this is not a requirement. The model also reflects that buildings are not visibly opposing and offer porosity as well as, as universal streets and riverfront break up the massing to provide view corridors. In conclusion, staff supports unlimited heights with no further controls and believes that this allows the owners flexibility and ability to develop a variety of building designs. With the regional competitive market, with projects such as Township Nine and the Rail Yard, it serves the owners a competitive advantage to develop and create a district that focuses on quality and void of poorly designed buildings. Should there be market support or tenant demand for taller structures, there is a willingness amongst the owners to develop a dense project. After consideration of these factors, staff is recommending that the city council approve the architectural design guidelines in the manner that's submitted in your staff report. This concludes staff's formal presentation. I'm open to answer any questions. In addition, I can maneuver within the model if you have a specific site location that you'd like me to focus in on.
What is this model telling us?
Model's telling us that based on the amount of parcel entitlement, the way the Bridge District is structured, there's a certain allotment of entitlement on each parcel. With the, applying the maximum at the nine point six million scenario with this model is run, what this is saying that on each site, this is a maximum potential building form that you could actually build out on each parcel-by-parcel basis. And as you see, in some cases, you have situations where you have a tall slender structure and then you have some supporting structures, maybe three-story buildings. That is modeled at the maximum potential allotted under the nine point six entitlement that's allowed within the Bridge District. And in some cases, we designed it so that we do have, as in this case, more of a larger floor plate with this building here. This building is a, I believe it's roughly about a ten-story building with a large floor plate. Typically would be, calculates out to twenty-eight thousand square foot floor plate, which would represent kind of a state office building. This is maximized. The developer, if they so choose, could possibly, if there is potential to go to a taller slender structure based on potential development, can basically cut off a portion of the property and, and more or less raise the verticality of the actual building height. So this structure here could possibly be within this waterfront area based on the amount of entitlement. So it offers, the amount of entitlement offers the flexibility to, to create different floor plate sizes as well as forced verticality.
So in this particular simulation, you have a mix of, in some places, you've chosen to simulate maximum height. And in some places, you've chosen to simulate maximum massing, right?
Correct.
Did you run one that was just maximum massing? I mean, it's pretty clear with the height, with, if everybody built a maximum height, there'd be plenty of porosity because...
Correct.
There's going to be lots of empty space between. But if everybody did maximum massing at the maximum level of entitlements, even if it's only eight stories, that's still a pretty significant wall. even if it's only eight stories, that's still a pretty significant wall on the waterfront. Did you?
Yes, we didn't run a model, but we did calculate, and what that gave us is roughly about five to six stories of development at a maximum potential on a parcel-by-parcel.
And with the transfer rights between parcels that individual property owners have, how did you account for that?
That would be one part. We would have to bump that up to the twelve and a half modeling, and as I'm aware, I believe with the Fulcrum Development Agreement, there is ability for them to actually transfer more into the waterfront area. We didn't run that model scenario. Obviously, that would boost the floor plate, and that obviously would boost the height if they went to a taller slender tower.
Do you have, I mean, just based on your professional judgment and living in this model for the last month, do you have some sense, if you went to twelve point six and folks transferred their maximum amount to the actual waterfront itself, how much? You had your five-story sort of massing average across the waterfront if everybody did it under the nine point six. If you went to the higher level, how?
I would say roughly about thirty percent more.
Okay. Thanks. Other questions for Mr. Bermudez? We don't have any requests to speak on this item, so there's discussion.
Public hearing.
Oh, is this a public hearing too? They are. You're right. Okay, open the public hearing on this item. The whole night is. So we don't have any requests to speak. Does anyone wish to address the council on items eight? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Turn to the council. Further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Kristof.
I would move that we adopt Resolution ten dash zero, run, providing for the amendments adding to volume four Bridge District Architectural Design Guidelines to the Bridge District Specific Plan. Way first reading and read by title and number only, ordinance ten dash three, providing for plan development number forty-one amendments amending to the text and to the architectural design guidelines. Direct staff to prepare a final version of specific plan, volume number four, for publication. Inform the audience that the second reading of ordinance zero dash, I mean, ten dash three is scheduled for February seventeenth, two thousand and ten.
Right, it's been moved by Mr. Kristof and seconded by Mr. Johannesen. Seeing no, Mr. Mayor Potemvegas.
Just a process question, Jim. A lot of the, I think, what helped us probably get to this point where we can at least agree on the design guidelines, we use language like "if practicable" and "if appropriate." And I just wonder, when it actually comes to a project, we'll see how good this works, and we won't know probably until then. What's the process for disputes that arise when we get to that point where we can't, we just can't agree on whether or not it's practical or plausible or appropriate or other terms that have been used throughout the document, which I think helps us with the flexibility that we need? But I'm just curious, how do we resolve those if we're not able to come to agreement?
Should we run it, our problem, our design review process remains intact, so we'd have the ability to appeal and that nature?
The design review, very good. All right. Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, and all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing done. That motion carries. Item nine is continued public hearing and first reading of ordinance ten dash four, approving a development agreement between the city and Smart Growth Investors II LLC.
Soon as we extricate Mr. Bermudez from under the table here.
Good evening, Mayor, Council members. I'm Katie Jacobson with the City Redevelopment Department. Tonight, the Community Development Department is recommending that the city council conduct a public hearing and first reading of ordinance ten dash four, approving a development agreement between the city and Smart Growth Investors II LLC. On January sixth, the council received an extensive presentation on the terms and conditions of the development agreement, the transaction structure, and the policies and strategies that had been enacted in the Bridge District. During that hearing, the developer requested that the first reading and public hearing be continued until tonight to allow time for city staff and the developer to work out language on a couple of final issues with regard to the agreement. The first issue was with regard to vesting entitlements. The developer was requesting that it be vested with its maximum or total entitlements for an extended period of thirty years. And the development agreement at that time had a vesting of total entitlements for seventeen years. The second issue was the formula by which the agency would carve out the district's share of agency operations and maintenance costs from the amount of tax increment that was being pledged to the district in order to construct infrastructure and amenities. Based on council's direction during that hearing, that staff should explore with the developer the possibility of enacting performance criteria, developing provisions which provided performance criteria within the terms and conditions of the development agreement that would trigger the ability for the developer to vest in its total or maximum entitlements for the extended thirty-year period that it was requesting. Staff and the developer met, and the agreement before you tonight now provides that the developer can vest in its maximum entitlements for the additional thirteen years. And that is triggered by the developer meeting all its obligations and performance criteria to construct all of the Proposition One C homes. The city does retain the ability to reallocate entitlements consistent, however, with the density bank mechanisms and provisions that a council recently adopted with the specific plan revisions. The second issue is with regard to the net tax increment. The net tax increment definition includes a carve-out for funding of the district's share of agency operations and maintenance. The, this is in addition to the statutory pass-throughs and housing set aside and the existing debt service for baseball. For ease of administration, initially, this carve-out for agency cost was expressed in terms of, it was originally expressed as the ratio of district to total tax increment. However, the developer and city have now agreed that the formula for deriving the district's share of the agency's operations and maintenance costs shall be derived by a formula which takes the ratio of agency employee hours dedicated to the Bridge District to the total agency employee hours and applies that ratio to the agency's annual operating budget. Finally, since the development agreement was transmitted to council, a memo has been provided to council with additional language that has been agreed to by the parties and added to the agreement, which clarifies the dedication process for the first phase of the Riverfront Path. This language addresses the city's requirement for an immediate easement dedication while the design for the path is still undergoing refinement and further defines the both exclusive and non-exclusive easement areas for the path. And that concludes my formal presentation.
All right. Are there questions for Ms. Jacobson? I have to acknowledge, I'm just reading the agreement. The staff report covered absolutely none of the changes. So, I mean, we have to go into the guts of the report. There's no, I mean, there's the full pages of required findings. There's nothing on the T I or on the vesting in the actual staff report. Which is kind of disappointing because it does not highlight what it is. The issues that we raised are how they were resolved. So we, until we heard the oral presentation or read through the entire development agreement and cross-reference it, it doesn't make for the smoothest decision-making. Mr. Kristof?
Yeah. Okay, last time, one of the major issues was reimbursement for agency expenses. And I guess the question I'm asking you is, is the city being reimbursed? Because it was the issue of like fourteen percent or whatever it was. I mean, there was a percentage there, and we thought that that was probably a fair rendition without coming with some, you know, really high-blown formula and evaluation of everybody's work and detailing all of the other kinds of things. So my question, bottom-line question is, is the city being reimbursed for the amount of work it performs?
Yes. It, there was.
But why can't you say that? I mean, you didn't say that at all in your presentation. Or at least, I didn't understand it because the mayor's correct. I mean, this was such a big issue with us on January sixth that one would have thought either it would have been italicized, highlighted. There would be some reference in the staff report so that we could digest it and figure it out. So, but, okay, so we are being reimbursed?
Yes.
Okay.
It was a matter of refining and agreeing to the formula by which the district's share would be computed.
But it's a totally different formula. This is not a refinement. This is a totally different formula. So the formula we had before us, before, was that the Bridge District's responsibility for the cost of the redevelopment agency generally were derived by, it's essentially the direct proportion of the Bridge District's tax increment in the whole redevelopment agency. Regardless of whether that's, how that tax increment was spent. Now, it is specifically related to the amount of staff time that is spent just on the Bridge District or directly related to the Bridge District. It could be on other stuff that's also directly related to the Bridge District, which is a fundamentally different calculation. It's now saying, you're only responsible for redevelopment agency costs to the extent that they directly serve you, which is exactly the opposite of what we said, or at least, you know, the large majority of the council said at the last hearing, which was every part of the redevelopment agency has a responsibility to contribute to some extent to the non-geographically-specific activities of business recruitment and retention, economic development in general. I mean, there are activities that the redevelopment agency pays, redevelopment agency covers that aren't specific to individual geographies, and it doesn't make sense for us to do that. And this goes in the opposite direction.
Well, if I can clarify this.
And we don't have a financial, we have no numbers. Last time, we had estimates about how much it would be and what the impacts would be. We've got nothing. This time, to say, you know, is this better or worse for agency activities, for the work that we're doing? How does it affect the potential of the Bridge District to meet the bond and the financing plan and all the improvements and amenities that we want to deliver there? It's just very difficult to make a decision.
Mr. Mayor, last time, you had asked specifically about economic development, which is funded by the redevelopment agency. That will be one of the costs that will be allocated to the Bridge District. It is in the operating costs that we will proportionally charge our time against.
Yeah, isn't, I think the formula is basically taking the operational budget, which includes these costs that span the entire redevelopment agency and allocated that based on a staff time calculation. So the fraction is multiplied by a number that includes the region or the district-wide cost, which include, I think it's not directly related to the, I mean, that was my understanding of it.
That's accurate. So first.
That's the denominator, the numerator. The actual thing that drives it is the agency hours that are dedicated to the Bridge District. Not agency hours dedicated to the Bridge District plus some proportionate share, or ninety-two percent of some proportionate share of the other activities. It's just strictly the hours dedicated to the Bridge District are the only thing in the numerator.
Correct. For example, today, one could say that fifty percent of agency time is now dedicated to the Bridge District. So you'd say fifty percent of the total agency operating budget would be netted out.
If, for example, economic development staff spent time recruiting a business to the Bridge District, those hours would be part of the numerator. They would be included in the costs that we would recover from Bridge District tax increment.
Okay. I mean, that's not where we're, I mean, our business recruitment retention efforts are not principally exclusively focused. I mean, it's frustrating because it's, the conversation that we had at the, I thought that the direction from the council, while not precise, was fairly clear that we thought it was important that the general, those general activities, maybe in some modified way, maybe some reduced way, but that the Bridge District had a responsibility, that we were not prepared to make any reductions in those as a result to direct this one here. I can't judge whether we're doing that or not because you haven't given us a fiscal estimate about that. And it seems like it would be much more difficult to do than the system you gave us last time, which obviously was imperfect because we couldn't reach an agreement on it. I'm suggesting we go back to that because that also failed. But it's, this basically says, you know, all the work that we do, because we're not, we don't have big new projects happening in the job-heavy part of the city. You know, there's no big new increment projects that are going to be generated where all the industrial parts of the city are. We need the redevelopment fund to be able to support those activities. And this basically says, look, if it's not in our neighborhood, then we're not contributing to it. And that's not, there's no way for us to run an economic development program if that's our operating philosophy.
Well, they will contribute their share.
Only if we're, only if it's a direct relationship to them. They will recruit absolutely nothing to our recruitment of IKEA or our support of United Bakery or anything else that we're doing in the rest of the, you know, had this agreement been in place before, which today, the entire redevelopment area pays for, which the entire redevelopment area today is paying for this work, which we couldn't have undertaken if the rest of the redevelopment area had this exact same language in it. Mr. Ross?
If I might, the question of which would be more or less advantageous to the city is a little bit difficult to answer, but I think I can characterize the previous versus the current proposal in terms of how cash would flow. In the previous proposal, they had a proportional obligation based on the tax increment projected. So in the near term, we would expend tremendous resources in support of the Bridge District, and they would pay virtually nothing. And then the later period of the district, we would spend less, and they would pay more. And so we'd be essentially deferring their obligations, including their proportional obligation for the balance of the district. In this instance, they're paying, basically, in the near term, they're paying a much higher price. Not a hundred percent of the cost of the entire operation, but they're paying the proportional hours times the ninety-two percent. So in the near term, we would receive more money, including more money to support other activities. In the later term, we would probably receive less than the previous alternative. Knowing which would be optimal is hard to say, but it is more reflective of a pay-as-you-go strategy for the Bridge District, which we also were inferring that the council was concerned about, that we don't continue to subsidize the district with the balance of the redevelopment district. This basically pays for their costs and a portion of the cost of the balance of the district in the near term, because in the near term, we know that we'll be spending a lot of time on it. So I think in that sense, we judge that this was probably preferential. Even if we don't know in the long term whether it would be, it would certainly be more advantageous for the city in the short term, and it would cover a portion of the balance of the district costs.
Further discussion? Is there a motion then? Or is this first reading only?
Yes.
This is a public.
Do we have a public hearing on this yet?
No.
No? Okay. Let me open it. Let me open the public hearing on this item.
So just.
Hold on a second. Is there any one that wish to address the council on this item? All right, we'll close the public hearing. Mr. Mayor Potemvegas?
So Toby, if I can just kind of maybe pick up where the mayor left off. So you're comfortable then that although the formula maybe is a little more front-loaded versus back-end, or more kind of a pay-as-you-go, as you said, you're comfortable then that we are not going to miss an opportunity to continue to fund what we currently do through redevelopment? I mean, are you comfortable that what's being proposed lets us continue to do what the mayor's talked about in terms of the recruitment efforts that may not directly impact this project but that will support it in the long term?
Yes, I'm comfortable that in the long term, we will be able to. I'm also more comfortable that in the short term, they'll be contributing to the balance of the district than the previous formula would have provided.
So Toby, how are overhead costs distributed in this model? So it seems to talk about actual hours, but there's still indirect costs that are associated.
That's right.
Your time, attorney time, everybody's time.
You take the entire budget of the redevelopment district, which of course covers also the overhead and indirect charges, and then you apply a factor, a ninety-two percent factor toward it.
Oh, that's what that came to.
Yeah.
Okay, so, all right, thank you.
So, I mean, just to clarify, so if the agency's budget is ten million dollars, which could include programs for outside, for the balance of town, a hundred percent of the staff was allocated over the next two years, a hundred percent of that ten million dollars would be paid by the developers, which would include funding these programs?
Yeah, ninety-two percent.
So that's where you get the front-loading?
Yeah.
Is there a motion? Do we need, we don't need a motion on this?
We do, it's a first reading, so we'll come back to you, but you would need an action.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Kristof?
I would move, conduct the first reading of ordinance ten-dash-four, approving the development agreement between the city and Smart Growth Investors Number Two LLC, based on the required findings being met by this report and the terms of the development agreement meeting the city's objectives.
All right, it's been moved by Mr. Kristof, seconded by Mr. Johannesen. All those in favor place say aye. Those opposed? Please record me as an abstention. The motion carries. I just, I need more time, I need more time to look at this, and I can't say how strongly enough how unhappy I am with the staff report on this item, because I do read the documents in advance, but there is absolutely no indication of how this, how this, all these issues were, and they were clearly important to the council at the last session. All right, council calendar, Ms. Richardson?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to point out that on February tenth, there is a city-county two-by-two schedule, but I believe that we're going to be rescheduling that because some of the county members can't, aren't going to be able to attend that. And I wanted to point out to the public that we will be closed on the fifteenth for President's Day holiday.
All right, question on the calendar? City manager reports?
Nothing that's taken to you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. City Attorney report?
Nothing to report.
Staff direction for members of the council?
Toby, post office issue, going to get a letter?
Yeah, we'll, I'll get back with you, both with the letter and an approach to the Congressman Thompson.
Super, thank you.
All right, we have no future agenda item requests? It's been moved by Mr. Beers and seconded by Mayor Portembiagas. This meeting be adjourned. All those in favor please say aye, and aye opposed. Hearing done, motion carries. Meeting is adjourned.